Or call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for February 27th, 2023 to order. It's five o'clock. Within a moment, we'll take a motion to go into executive session. To note, we'll be back to regular session no later than 6:00 P. M.
Thank you, Mike Michael. I move pursuant to general law three, thirty A, section twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, including those with employment agreements, finance director, chief of police, fire chief, and town administrator, B pursuant to mass general law thirty A, section twenty-one, A three, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions. And the chair has determined that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position as for the Harwich Maintenance Employee Association, H M E A. And C, executive session, general law thirty A, paragraph twenty-one, A seven, to comply with any general or special law, general law, chapter twenty-one, fourteen, section one B.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session for the three reasons listed. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Good evening. Jenny, please. Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for February 27th, 2023 back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session. Three topics. Negotiations with non-union personnel, including fire, finance director, chief of police, fire chief, and town administrator. No action was taken. We also talked about the Harwich Maintenance Employee Association. No action was taken. And the last one referred to general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, A seven, to comply with any general or special law, general law, chapter two fourteen, section one B. No action was taken. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment announcement. All right, we'll jump right into new. Oh, sorry. Yep.
David Blankfire Chief, just wanted to let the board know that we received notification last Friday that we're the recipient of a federal grant for the amount of sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. Little funny story with this. This was submitted last year, was originally denied because they ran out of money before they got to our grant, even though it was highly scored. They infused ARPA money into the grant program and we were awarded a secondary, a secondary award based on that. Unfortunate part is we already submitted this year's grant for the same project, so we kind of lost an opportunity. But for three thousand dollars of town money, we're going to get up to eight thermal imaging cameras. So it's a great, great opportunity for us, the ones we have. We were purchased with a grant about twelve, thirteen years ago, so certainly something we look forward to working on. We have a committee developed in the department looking at what's available. And I have to acknowledge firefighter Christina Reagan and deputy chief Thornton for their efforts in getting this done. So all in all, it's a good project.
Great. Thank you, chief. Great work again.
Good evening. Link Cooper, D. P. W. Director. Real quickly, just want to tell you the Azalea Drive Bridge Project is formally underway. I think you were briefed a week or two ago about that, but there actually are out there, set up, details, and the work's beginning.
Great. Thank you, Link.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
Yeah, hello. Good evening. Patrick Otten, East Harwich. Two weeks ago, I brought up the issue of registering rental properties. I'd like to make sure that that gets on the agenda for board discussion. Couple of things to think about. Do you care about Harwich? Do you care about Board of Health regulations? Do you care about zoning regulations? What about Harwich businesses? How about Harwich's tax base? Do you care about life? Human life? How about children's life in rental properties? I seriously want you to put this on your agenda for discussion. Please let me know when it's on the agenda so that I can participate. All right? Thank you.
Put that out to the board if any board member wants that on the agenda to please email me that you want an agenda. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? New business? Dr. Carpenter, superintendent, to present the fiscal year 2024 Monomoy Regional School District Budget. Good evening. No way you're alone tonight.
No. Michael's on his way.
Okay.
We might need to do it in reverse order, I think.
That's fine.
Could talk the regional agreement stuff. Well, Michael makes his way from Chatham to here.
Sure. Any board member have a problem with taking out the regional changes first? So the second item Monomoy is here for is to discuss regional agreement amendments for 2023 annual town meeting.
Do you need copies or?
We have it in the packet.
Okay. So, you know, so last year, we brought to both towns a set of changes to the regional agreement that were fiscal related. So they, you know, they were things that adjusted how the towns pay for the schools. And, and it was something that, you know, that came to both boards here and in Chatham and also to town meetings. The, the town meetings approved that and that created the new sort of funding for the assessment mechanism. But we also said that we were going to be coming back to the boards to, to bring to you changes that will have us go update obsolete language in the regional agreement. So just like we did last year, we, you know, we put together a side by side that has the current regional agreement on one side and the proposed changes on the other side. The, at the end of that document, there's just a, there's a one pager that summarizes what those, what those changes are. It's pretty straightforward. You know, long and short, the, you know, there's a lot of text in the existing regional agreement that talks about the transition from Harwich Public Schools and Chatham Public Schools to Monomoy. But it actually never even uses the word Monomoy because at the time, the new name of the regional, you know, the regional school district hadn't been decided. So, so it removes whole sections. It just lines them out that deal with transition. And then it has a, and then it just updates the language. So there's, there's over forty times in the document where it had been referring to a regional district school committee, and that's now been changed to the Monomoy Regional School Committee. There are ten locations in the document where it refers to boards of selectmen, and that's being updated to select boards. There are times where, where the term regional school district or, or just regional schools, and we just insert Monomoy there. There's one time where, you know, where it talks about the elementary school that's in Harwich, and we refer to it as Harwich Elementary School in this. And then there's a time where they refer to the combined middle high school in Chatham, which is now the middle school, the Monomoy Regional Middle School. The only thing that, that is even fiscally related in the changes, there's one piece where there was a, an error in a reference in the, in the document where, where it talks about how debt service, it says debt service attributable to the high school and middle school will be assessed to the member towns using a three-year rolling average of each member's foundation enrollment as described. And it's, it gives this section, it says, as described in section nine, A, three, A, two. Well, if you follow that section, it goes to, it's, it's not directing it to a section in the document that follows that calculation. So, you know, so it's simply just taking the reference and pointing it to the right place instead of pointing it to the wrong place. That's the sum total of the changes. But we presented this to both our school committee and to the Chatham Board, and we're just bringing it here to let you know that we'd like to put it on the, the upcoming warrant and get it approved. Like the other changes, we have to also send this through to DESI. But again, it's really straightforward changes and they know that, you know, that we were going to go back this year to update the obsolete language.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. Has the school committee voted this yet and has the Chatham Board of Selectmen voted yet?
The Chatham Select Board voted to place it on the warrant, knowing that, I think they didn't vote the exact language to get placed, but to have a placeholder for the, for the article to show up on their warrant.
Okay. Thank you. Don, questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was a fairly substantial amount of data that you dumped onto this meeting between this and the budget. So you'll excuse me if my speed reading skills aren't as good as they used to be. Can I have an assurance from you that the methodology for amending the agreement is still the same? That you have to go to town meeting and the individual boards?
Right.
That's been the source of discussion in the past.
Right. And that's, and it's spelled out in the regional agreement that that's how it has to happen.
And it's going to remain so.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll say. Larry? Julie's good.
I don't have any comment on it.
Joe?
No comments.
Okay. I have no comment on that either. Scott, because of the way I listed it, we'll bring it back on whether or not we're going to put it on and whether or not we're going to support it.
Sure.
So let's jump back up to the budget.
All right.
Just buying Michael some time.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Getting his six, ten.
I warmed it up.
It's quick. So I'm hoping the slides are going to be up here shortly.
Just introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening. Mike McMillan, the school business manager from one of my public schools. I'm delighted to be here in front of you to present the draft FY24 budget for Monomoy Regional School District. We have, and I apologize that it was about last minute, but we received updated, or we received the initial draft budget figures from the state late last week. And so we updated the presentation to you so that we could kind of be the most up-to-date version of the budget that we present. But actually, this, so this assessment figures you'll see now haven't actually been voted by the school committee because they've only just been updated.
Okay. Not voted by the school committee?
No. The budget has been, but not the assessments.
Okay. And for the public, I will have this in the packet next week, and you could probably get a copy through our office if you wanted one sooner than that.
Thank you very much. And I'll be clear, and I've kind of highlighted where it's been updated throughout this presentation. So I'm going to give really a high-level overview of the budget. I wanted, you know, I have included a few extra slides just to give a bit of context to what's going on in the school district right now, some of the challenges we're facing, kind of outlining what our needs are, and then also coming on to the second part, really, how we hope to fund those needs. So the really high-level overview of what's happening. So we do continue to see an impact of COVID in the schools, less on the medical side now and more on the kind of need for academic intervention and broader social and emotional learning supports. We are seeing particularly in the early grades, an increase in demand for special education services, and that's due to the, you know, the, the impacts on learning that came around due to COVID. You know, all that time, kids were out of the classroom and away from their teachers, which really had a long-term impact on the students and staff, and an impact that will last beyond where we see the state funding, state and federal funding available. We, like everybody here, like town of Harwich and people at home, are seeing an impact of financial pressures, like inflation, although that seems to have lessened a little bit in the last couple of months, but it's still high. We're also seeing labor and supply chain issues, and all these are impacting our bottom line. They're driving up costs, utilities, like getting instructional supplies and building maintenance. And those two, those sort of student needs and financial pressures have led to this budget request of forty-four million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars, an increase of one and a half million or three point six percent. And so this is one of the places where we've updated the slides. So that translates to an assessment with a few extra steps, few additional steps, of one point one six eight million for Harwich, an increase, and an increase of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for Chatham. So that's four point three percent and one point four percent respectively. All right. But I'm going to go into a bit more detail on all of that. So just student enrollment, it's always worth, you know, highlighting those of the students coming through the doors. That number has, you know, we, we saw that number drop significantly from two thousand and ninety, twenty to two thousand twenty-one, but since then, it's been relatively level. And we do expect over the coming years to see that number start to drop off, but it hasn't yet. We're still seeing the number of students leaving is being replaced, but we know we have a bubble kind of in the upper middle of the schools of the district. And as that bubble passes out, and we expect that enrollment will go down. But so far, it's staying relatively stable. I'd just like to include this slide now, just to highlight the physical context in which we teach our students. We have a beautiful building just up the road for the high school, but the other three buildings, the Chatham Elementary School, the Harwich Elementary School, and the Monomoy Regional Middle School are all, you know, twenty years old and above. And we're really hitting that critical time where we need to start replacing some of those critical, crucial elements like boilers and generators. We're in good working order right now, but it's definitely on the horizon. And we're also seeing unfortunately, I mean, high school looks brand new, but some of those components, like up on the roof, they're running twenty-four, seven, and they're now ten years old. So we're seeing the cost of maintaining those, those components, like the HVAC system, start to increase. And our response to, not so much on the building side, but on the needs of our students is providing excellent classroom instruction with high-quality instructional materials. So that's what we're all about. We're also increasingly focused on providing additional support for the social, emotional, and mental health of our students and cutting through all of that as a commitment to equity, to ensure that students get what they need where they are. And what that looks like in practice, that means we're investing in textbooks, in curriculum materials, comprehensive professional development for our staff, with the work on the portrait of a graduate so that we're aligned throughout the district on what, how, what we want our students to look like when they finish at Monomoy. We're also extending the school days, providing more enrichment programs after school. Then, in addition, we're expanding our preschool because we're seeing an increase in demand for special education placements at the preschool level. And we have increased some of our staffing around mental health and also including our staffing structure. I'm going to come on to that to help support staff and students. And we continue to invest in our capital needs and repairs. And we are, we are seeing some improvements. We have seen some of our, I mean, I've picked some of the highlights, but we are seeing improvement. We did see a dip, without a doubt. There was a dip in achievement coming out of COVID, but we're starting to see, through our efforts and that you helped fund, we're starting to see an improvement and we're starting to see an increase in achievement. So that was my context. So thank you for letting me go through that, but I think it's important just to give you an idea of where we're coming from. So you, I think you all are very familiar with the process for developing our budget at this point. You know, we look at those policies and that's kind of the context that informs our expenditure. And on the other side, that's funded by, before, you know, included in the budget number is the school choice, circuit breaker, and a grants. And then after coming off that, before we finalize the assessment, we take into account general fund revenue, like the state aid, Medicaid, and excess and deficiency. And then what's left over gets split between the two towns. All right. So we're, so that one point five million increase, so that is a little higher than the last couple of years, still well below inflation, and then kind of in keeping with the sort of the average of the last eight or nine years. So I've tried to kind of capture the entire budget in this one slide. So it's not perfect, but if you bear with me, what I've tried to do is show kind of by big category, and that they're listed down on the right, oh, wait for it. Down the right of this slide, I've got the categories, and the left, the bar on the left shows what the impact of the budget has been in that category, where it's a red going in the left-hand direction. That's a saving. That's reduced our budget. And all the blue lines going towards the right are increases in the budget. And the longer the line, the bigger the increase. So just highlight those first three red ones. So while particularly the first one, school choice tuition. So that's the number of students we have, where students who live in Harwich and Chatham but choose to go to other public schools like NOSIT, like D Y, we get, we get assessed by the state to pay for those. And what we have seen in recent years is that number has come down, is fewer, smaller percentage of students are choosing to attend schools outside of the towns. So that's great news for the district, and that's because, you know, students are choosing to stay at Monomoy because they value the education they receive there. And that's similarly for charter tuition, although it's a bit of a lottery, literally a lottery with charter tuition, whether they get accepted in the charter schools, but we have also seen a drop there. The line in the middle of those two red lines, though, is the staff turnover. So we have seen a lot of turnover in the last couple of years. Again, I think that's a bit of a hangover from COVID. People just got to the end of their tether with the workforce after, you know, the year of working remotely and everything. And we've seen an increase in retirements and just general staff turnover. And when somebody leaves at the top of the salary range and they're replaced by someone a little further down, that gives us a saving, and that's reflected here. Other ones, just to highlight, salary increases is the longest one. Salaries are by far the biggest part of our budget. So a couple of percent increase in there built into the contracts there translates to a big impact on the budget. The other, health insurance is obviously a key component of our budget as well. Other eight items, just to highlight, property insurance keeps going up as well, living on the Cape, that continues to be a problem. Maintenance of our buildings, as I mentioned, we continue to spend a lot of money on HVAC maintenance and plumbers, and building repair is costly. We're also seeing, and this comes back to those pressures, increase in transportation costs as we struggle to hire enough drivers, and that's putting pressure on salaries and also just fuel costs. And utilities are there as well. I'm sure you guys are seeing, I'm sure in town of Harwich and elsewhere are seeing, and people at home, big increase in our utility costs, electricity and gas. But I will say, I know I'm covering a lot of ground, so if anybody has any questions at any point, feel free to just interrupt.
Thank you.
Hey, staffing levels, I just always like to include this slide just so you know where we're at. We, our staffing had come down for the last few years prior to 2022. We did, we have increased slightly since then. That is funded by the federal funding for COVID relief at the S R funds. That's helped us add temporary positions, and we've also had to add some special education aids to support students, and they're required by their education plans. I keep again pushing this slide forward. That's the staffing. So as the staffing increases, as the staffing changes, sorry, as the student numbers change, we are driven by this goal of maintaining similar class sizes across the district. That's plus or minus, nineteen plus or minus two at the middle and high school and eighteen plus or minus one at the elementary levels. For a long time, that was about not a, too big classroom sizes, but now we have the other side that we see classroom sizes smaller, and it's how we balance that out at the same time. But that continues to be a consideration for the district. As part of our budget process, we always ask the principals and our directors, what else do you need in order to continue to providing high-quality instruction and high-quality materials? And this is what the principals and the district leadership team put together for the budget needs this year. As I mentioned, we've added a pre-K section, and that's funded through S R, those federal funds. We are not sure if that's going to be a long-lasting increase, that increase in the pre-K program. We believe it might be a bubble, again, related to COVID. So that's why we funded it with those S R funds, and we'll see where we are next year if the numbers continue to go up. And the remaining items, it's a little hard to see on here, but they're in orange that see requested next to them. Those are the ones that are currently funded in the budget, and the ones that are red are the ones that are not funded in the budget at the moment. The biggest one really that's funded in the budget as a moment is we're aiming to add two district-wide curriculum positions. That's really to improve the quality of instruction throughout the district, supporting teachers and therefore students, and really trying to tackle some of the challenges seen due to COVID. We've also added increase to special education teaching position. Again, we're seeing an increase in need for those that are services driven by COVID. I won't go through all of those, but those are the, are our biggest ticket items and some technology upgrades as well, which are partly offset by federal grants. We also have our capital and extraordinary maintenance items. We are, we kind of go through a similar process with those budget needs, where we identify all the needs for the district in maintaining the buildings and then prioritize them on a few different criteria. One of them is safe, the safety and welfare of students and teachers, and that's what made the external lighting at the middle school one of our priorities so that we, for safety of our drop-off and pickup of students. We also would like to replace carpet and critical security needs are P A systems. So, and they are particularly the, not so much at the high school, but the elementary schools and middle school, they're really not up to par at the moment, and given they're a critical part of building evacuation and safety, we would like to, or we need to replace them.
Michael, what school was that for? All schools?
All schools, actually, yeah.
Even the new high school?
Yeah. So the high school is in pretty decent shape, it's just the bell system, which doesn't work so well, and we have to replace some components to get it up to. Thank you.
If I may, I have one question on this slide.
Go ahead, Larry.
Michael, you've listed these as capital and extraordinary maintenance items.
Yes.
You listed a lot of other items in the previous slide about, you're going to need replacement. Do you have a capital plan for boilers and all the things you go?
Yes. Yes, we do. So yes, that's a great point that I said how terrible it is and all those other items, and none of them are listed here, but they are. So, so essentially, we prioritize, and then we have a kind of ten-year capital plan.
We have a capital plan, it's just not in this package.
Yes. Yeah. So boilers are coming in the next year or so.
I just mentioned as an example.
Yeah. But yeah, so, so really, the priorities were, and again, it comes down to safety, is that lighting at the middle school and the P A systems. So that really trumped everything else. And the guys, the custodians, do a great job of maintaining all our equipment. So boilers, despite their age, are still working fine, still working without many problems. So I'm comfortable keeping them off for another year. But we have one, we have one boiler that's pushing like twenty-six years old, and I just know we'll need to replace that soon.
At some point, it may be good to include the capital budget, so.
I'd be delighted to, yeah. That'd be great. I'd be happy to.
Julie, you're all set so far?
Well, I have questions going back to the S R funds.
Yep.
I mean, I can, I can either ask them now or.
You've got all your questions written down?
Yeah.
We'll hammer them at the end.
Yeah.
All right. Don, you all set for now? Go ahead.
Yeah, just one clarification. When you're talking about the upkeep of the capital stuff in the, the schools, because they're all not equal, and we all understand that.
Yeah.
I'm old enough to remember when we reconfigured and rebuilt the elementary schools. So that, you're talking boilers, is that with or without upgrade of the control systems?
So it depends. So it depends, I mean, it depends which control. So some of the control systems we've replaced since the boilers were replaced. So we have recently replaced, a couple of years ago, one of the schools, some of the controls. So it really depends.
I was worried specifically about Harwich Elementary because computers, when you start talking twenty, twenty-five years are ancient.
Yeah. So we replaced some of the controls at Harwich last year, but if we were to replace the boiler, it would include a replacement of some of the control systems.
Okay, thanks. I'll wait for the other stuff.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right. So as I mentioned, there's like, just the way the assess, with the way the regional agreement is written, there's like two groups of revenue. Some of the revenue, which is listed here, school choice, circuit breaker, grants, and S R, are all built into the budget. So when you see that budget line, these have all been reflected already. School choice, that's the money we receive from students who choose to come here from other districts. That has dropped a little, but not as much as the number of students leaving here, so we're, we're a net benefitter from school choice. Circuit breaker, that's money we receive from the state for reimbursement of some special education costs and grants and the S R funds we've talked about. So that, S R, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars from S R, that's a, that, that bar will not be there next year, because that's, we're in, we're heading into the final year of those S R funds. And then this is the set, this is the other group of revenue. So that, once the budget is set, then before we calculate the assessments, we take this revenue off. So the biggest chunk of that by far is chapter seventeen. That's the main state aid from, from the, for public education. That's the main state aid from, from the, for public education. And that's been updated since last week. Unfortunately, that was a little lower than I had estimated. Uh and so we've, that's now come down. Excess and deficiency, we've talked about that before. That's the funds that is, eh, essentially it's a bit like town's free cash and we're allowed, we, we have to use a certain amount of that, if it's over five percent total, we have to use that amount to offset the budget. As it is, we're using eight hundred thousand dollars to offset the budget. Transportation aid and charter school aid, other state funding we received, those changed a little bit. And then the other thing to highlight is in that other district revenue, we, that includes interest and we've, we saw a big increase in our interest, but our new treasurer helped to invest our funds in state bonds, to, our federal bonds to increase our revenue. So that's helped to offset the bun, the budget and the assessments as well. All right, so I'm almost there, we're getting there. So we went through the total budget, that's forty-four point three million dollars. Then all that general fund revenue came off the top and that leaves just thirty-eight million and a little to be funded through the assessments. Before we get to the assessments, sidestep, just to look at enrollment, because the foundation enrollment really drives the assessment calculation. As I mentioned, enrollment fell and then it sort of leveled off. I just wanted to highlight in this slide two things. One is that the district calculations rely on FY twenty to FY twenty-two, the way the assess, uh the regional agreement is written. So we see a delay of changes in enrollment. Whereas the state calculations are based on this year's enrollment. And this also, as you can see, we're expect to see a bit of a drop in enrollment from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six. This is just, I just, I like this slide just to highlight, you know, why we continue to see a bit of a swing from Chatham's share of enrollment to Harwich. So what this table shows is the impact of foundation enrollment changes to the assessment calculations. So you can see that in the top table, the graph, the column to the far right shows where Harwich students have made up a slightly larger percentage of all students in the district eh, over the last few years. And then that's, the smaller table shows the three year average. And that's important because you can see, even though in twenty twenty-two, we actually saw percentages that, you know, Harwich's sheer drop by a full percentage. It's not enough to budge the three year average in Harwich's favor financially. So we're still seeing overall a shift towards Harwich in their share of enrollment, which means a share of the assessment. And that brings us to the punchline. So this is the eh, the draft assessments. So one of the things that changed, and this has been updated again in the last few days. So one of the things that, eh, was ha- higher than I had anticipated was the local minimum contribution, which is at one point three million dollars from uh, from our last year. So it doesn't impact the budget that much, it doesn't impact the budget one point, eh, the assessment one point three million, but it does shift, by my calculations, maybe around seventy thousand dollars more towards Harwich than you'd otherwise see. And then the operating assessment, that's driven by a whole bunch of enrollment figures. It's now slightly more complicated since we've got the new assessing methodology, could look to break that out. And you saw both, this, both eh, towns actually went down in that share of the above minimum contribution operating. Transportation is up and that's, I mentioned earlier, uh that just in cost of transportation has increased. Capital is also up overall and that, there was a shift there from Chatham back to Harwich. And really that's because last year we had anticipated for this year, we had anticipated doing a large capital project, replacing the Chatham roof. However, we were planning to fund that with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, however, they have closed that program. So they were not accepting applications this year, so it won't be open next year either. And so that means that's no longer in the budget. So that big capital project came out of the budget and reduced Chatham's assessment. And it was replaced, not entirely, but partially replaced by district wide capital projects, which are shared seventy-five percent roughly by Harwich. So that's why there was that shift in the capital assessment. And debt continues to go down. It's just the schedule of payments for the next twenty or so years till that's all paid off. So we'll see that go down every year. And that comes out four point three percent increase for Harwich. Just before we go on, just, just to remind you that had we not changed the budget, had we not changed the assessment methodology, it might be much worse. So that, I can, if we had, if we were continuing to use the original methodology, it would be some seven hundred and thirty-two thousand more when it is running. So in some ways, it's a good news to. Before we go, just before you get, we get to your questions, I just wanted to highlight two more things. One is, we still have, we have some updates to do. So we had, the budget, because we've not been back to the eh, school committees since then, has to be updated with this, the budget has to be updated and the assessments to reflect state funding. And we know that's just the first draft of the, the state budget. So depending on the timeline, there might be a further update. We have health insurance figures, the budget does not reflect the reduction that we had budgeted six to eight percent for health insurance, it's actually come in at around four percent. So that's going to provide some saving for the budget. I have been, I, we're pretty much up to date with all our staffing figures. So as we get retirements and so on, I update the budget to the, to the very last minute. So we have all the best reflection of where we are. And then where, you know, where, if we can fund budget needs and then bussing costs. We've been working with the Cape Cod Collaborative to do all our bussing, just to make sure we know exactly how much we need to fund for next year. And then we'll have another school committee vote March ninth and we'll have a final figure for you. Now last, this is my last thing. So we are trying to have a kind of long term view of our budget, so we're not just working year to year, but looking ahead. So just, these are some of the things we see on the horizon. FY twenty-five, potentially a difficult year because we know we will not have Esser funds and we will be heading into a new contract with our, with all our staffing groups except custodians, including the teachers. By FY twenty-five, we might be back on with that MSBA program to replace roofs, potentially the middle school and our Chatham. And we will, do expect to see over the next few years, changes in enrollment. We do think that enrollment is going to start to go down, how it has in the last couple of years. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For putting up with me this long.
Yep, thank you. What, uh, and I'll start with the questions, what do you have in your E and D account now?
So we have a two points, I just looked at it, two point one million, right, uh, I can tell you the exact figure actually. You give me two, but it's about two point uh, two million and it's a, that was just being certified by the state. And so that, of that, we're planning to use eight hundred thousand dollars. So five percent, it's about three hundred thousand dollars over five percent. And you're, you're, the max you're allowed to have in there is five percent. So we're using well over the eh, the minimum that we have to use to offset the budget.
Thank you.
So there is a, so I mean, because I'm sure the next question is, oh, could you use more?
Not, I'm not there yet.
Oh, come on.
You can anticipate that, 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 that's going to definitely be an ask, I'm not there yet.
Okay.
Uh Joe, the um, health insurance numbers that we got as a town last week, did we finalize that? What was our health insurance increase?
Um, I believe in the sources and uses it references a one point three percent increase. Um, and that's because the anticipated rates went uh four percent on most plans uh and two percent on the plans that we're trying to drive employees to.
Thank you.
So according to the finance director, if I've said this right, um, when you compare year over year, it's one point three percent.
Okay, thank you. Julia, I'll start with you.
Thank you, I, I have a bunch of different questions. Um, but one thing, I just want a clarification, because I had your previous handout from the other meeting where it looked like we were at three point eight percent.
Yeah.
So then I was hoping that state numbers would help us out there, but it looks like they haven't.
Yeah, they went the other way, so.
We were hoping the same.
Yeah, so it's, there's two parts to, one is chapter seventeen, funding was down. So that, you know, revenue to offset all the assessments went down. And then the other part was the minimum local contributions. So we had a bigger, a bigger amount to be shared between the two towns and Harwich got a slightly bigger share of that amount because of the state funding.
Okay, um, so thank you for clarifying that. Um, the other, the, the big question I really have is in, you know, I think it's probably an obvious question. But you have all these positions that are not funded, um, they're the Esser funds.
Yeah.
And there's like five or six positions, I think you dropped the nurse ask, right, to cover a couple of other positions. Um, I guess my question is, you're looking to add two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the new two curriculum people. Two fifty to clarify would be including benefits.
Yeah.
And that's in your budget. But these other positions that are boots on the ground to me are in your Esser funded and are only really there for a year.
I think, looking, looking at it, you know, beyond, you know, beyond this year. And, you know, I, I know last time we were here and Mary was asking, you know, if you're seeing a, a decrease in enrollment, you know, you know, what are, you know, what's your staffing doing? I, I, I think we're, we're in this weird place when it comes to the impacts of COVID long term on kids. And an example of that, that Michael brought up is what we're seeing at preschool. You know, so, you know, so there were students that didn't get early intervention at preschool and, and we have more students needing, you know, preschool intervention than when we were, you know, significantly larger, you know, a decade ago. So, you know, so I think there's that, there's a concern that we're going to need the supports that are carried by Esser um, moving, you know, moving forward. And we also know that we have a bubble that's currently sitting at eighth grade at the high school. So that by the time we get eh, you know, through next year, I think our high school staffing will be as big as it needs to be to ride out the bubble as it goes through the high school. But we're seeing the middle school enrollment is going to be decreasing pretty significantly and we're seeing, you know, gradual decreases at both elementary schools. I think if we look at staffing, you know, sort of, we should be able to go and absorb the vast majority of those Esser positions with staff positions. You know, so if we're, if we're decreasing the number of classroom teachers or other, you know, or other individuals who won't be needed because, you know, the, you know, the middle school will drop by another twenty, thirty, forty, you know, students. Can we then, you know, can we then go and use that FTE savings to go, you know, make sure that we have social emotional supports for a long, for a, for a longer term?
So, I mean, I know you're working with the numbers you have, but you really can't know those numbers in ca- in case you get, if you have a drop and you have positions, I mean, uh, openings for students, you could be getting more kids in from other towns, correct?
Well, we can, we control the choice coming in, you know, so we, you know, so what we have always tried to do is look at, you know, school choice as, do we have free seats in the room? Not do we bring in, you know, you know, stu-, you know, you know, so it's, you know, so we should, you know, we should at our, you know, at, you know, if we were just focused at the middle school, you know, by, you know, by the end of next year, we're likely at a place that the enrollment has dropped enough that there's probably three FTEs worth of staffing that if we, you know, I would be looking next year in a budget cycle to divert that staffing to go support the positions that we're going to need for, you know, for continued social emotional supports.
But I guess back to the original point of the two curriculum positions and the discussion on the, the problems COVID has, has brought. And I think it's COVID, it's, in, in addition, we saw social media even previous to COVID causing more problems. So it's a conglomeration of issues, but I think they're obviously very real issues and, uh, you know, the teachers are right on the front lines and then of course your administrators and, and all of that. But I'm questioning why, because those are real problems and they're not going away. Whether or not your numbers, your overall enrollment may decrease, tho- those problems have to be addressed with those kids, right? Whether they be academic issues, whether they be social emotional issues. And, and to take those people right now who, who are unfunded that, other than Esser funds, to take those people out of the mix and to replace them with curriculum people, doesn't put more people in the classroom to help the students and the teachers who are on the front lines and the special ed teachers. Never mind, there are other kids obviously in this situation where you wouldn't be on an IEP, but you're struggling and so you need more attention. So to me, I think I understand the COVID part and I understand the need for, for more help. But I guess to me it's reverse. I would say, why aren't you funding the curriculum positions with the Esser funds? Not knowing, maybe you don't need them long term. Maybe you need someone to come in on a temporary basis to look at things. But, but before you even worry, and again, I, I know this is an international problem, numbers are down. Kids have been struggling, teachers are leaving the workforce in, in massive amounts because it's a lot. It's a lot on educators. But to me, this is a reverse reaction, is that we're, we're taking two higher paying jobs, putting them in your budget. Where the people who we really need to be in place for the students and the teachers are being left out there for one more year and you're hoping for different decreases in populations and you certainly know them way better than us. But I would still say, great, if you have some decrease and you have extra staff to put more to the teachers and the students, to me, that's a bonus because your numbers are going to come up over time if the kids and the, and the teachers are getting the support they need. I'm not so, I'm not so worried about, you know, what the numbers look like nationally, internationally and right here in Harwich and Monomoy. I, I'm, I'm worried about the students on a daily basis getting the support they need in the classroom, whether they're special needs or not. And I think that, that currently there's so much on both the students and the teachers in the classroom. It worries me to see this is the way we're going to fund something, that, I guess that's my short term, you know, statement. But also we're talking about adding a special ed teacher, but I think the special, I think we lost a special ed teacher a couple of years ago. I think it was in kindergarten and first grade combined, so we're really putting somebody back, right?
At Harwich, yeah.
Yeah, at Harwich. And do you have anyone at Chatham?
Yeah, we have special ed teachers at Chatham too.
How many at Chatham?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, well, because I, I mean, obviously Harwich is a bigger school, so if Chatham has one and Harwich has one, you clearly need more in, in Harwich, so. So that's just another question I would have, I'd like to get that info. And I love that you've added the pre-K and to me, the Esser funds make sense there. You, you could be riding a bubble, but I hope you're not because we're looking to, you know, come up with funding for pre-K for the exact reasons you noted Scott, which is you've got a lot of children out there who never, have never been seen.
Right, so what we, you know, what we don't know is, you know, is this, this spike that we're seeing at that pre-K? Is that, i- is that a temporary, you know, thing? Or is this going to be something that we're going to have to add in long term into, you know, into a budget? But, you know, I, I do want to assure you, you know, like, Michael and I have had many conversations about the Esser. You know, we have a vision of supporting, like, those, you know, those positions aren't going to go away after three years. You know, the Esser money is with us for three years, you know, but we've had to kind of look beyond, you know, the FY twenty-four budget to how do we sustain the, you know, those, you know, those positions moving forward.
And I appreciate that and I'm sure you're crunching numbers all the time, but I guess from the board's perspective or from my perspective is that those are important positions and they're not in your budget. You're adding two more positions and who's to say that you don't have to come back next year to say, well, that didn't happen the way we saw it happening? And so who's going to pay the bulk of that? Harwich. So the reality for us economically, never mind our commitment to the students and the staff. So to me, it's sort of a trifecta of different things. And, and I'm hoping that you're going to see more and more kids feed into the system because if we're able to, and again, if we're successful in being able to offer stipends, the hope is that we're getting, we're helping. the hope is that we're getting, we're helping.
Right.
Feed the children into the school system at a higher level, that the staff doesn't have to work as hard. But I know we also talked about at the housing huddle, and I'm surprised to hear that your numbers aren't really changing because we talked about at the housing huddle, the fact that the lack of housing stability brings kids in and out of your system frequently, which is disturbance for the poor kids who have to keep doing that.
Right.
But also for the teachers who have to sort of get them up and running and then the effect it has on the kids in the classroom already there. So, you know, I think your numbers can't always be that stable based on the situation the entire Cape is facing.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I just think it's, it's such a numbers game and it's not that I don't trust your numbers and your ability to assess them. But I am saying to me, I think it's a moving target, you know? And, and those staffing positions, I think, are, are super important that we know we have boots on the ground for the kids, for the teachers, so that hopefully they can get over this hump. But I, you know, I think it's going to take a few years, if, if not longer. So that's, those are a couple of my questions.
So I do have the FTEs for special education. So this is all special education positions at each school. So it includes, but I, so teachers at Chatham, that's 2.5 FTE budgeted for next year. Plus the 0.5 which we've included as whatever budget needs. So that'll be up to three, and at Harwich it's six.
Harwich has six.
Yeah. That does include, let's see, yeah, just all teachers.
So total of six in Harwich, two and a half in Chatham.
The V comes through, yeah.
One and a half add.
A half add.
Half add.
Yeah. I mean, just in terms of the curriculum positions, I think the idea is that by adding these positions, they can support all, a much wider number of teachers. So it's about what's the most effective use of our money. So, yeah, sure, if we had, if we all had, you know, blank checkbooks, we would hire all these positions and more. But we don't, so it's, you know, the leadership team evaluated what was the most effective use of the money. And the way to, you know, adding these positions, they will support them because, like you say, it's the boots on the ground. It's the teachers in the class and these, we just support those teachers and help to make them, give them more support in the classroom and make them as effective as possible.
How will they support the teachers and therefore be able to support the students?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, a way to, you know, a, a way to look at it, you know, we, uh, I'm trying to not get into education speak, but, you know, uh, in schools, we talk about tier-one instructions, what happens in a classroom. And, you know, ideally you want to have that, you know, those classroom teachers, you know, supported, you know, supported and, and have, have people work with them on differentiation and, you know, make sure the curriculum, you know, the curriculum is as good as we can get it. When kids don't succeed in that classroom, you know, then you go to that next tier down. You know, so you're, you're, they're coming out of the classroom for special, you know, for special intervention and supports. You know, so the, the hope is that, you know, that we, you know, that we think about taking these, uh, these curriculum support people who at the middle school and high school level support improvements in what's going on in the classroom. So that, you know, so that, you know, the teacher, you know, is better able to support all the students in that, in that classroom and hopefully see fewer students coming out of that classroom because they're not successful for tier-two interventions. You know, so it's, you know, so it's, it's a, we have, I think, as a district, initially with the ESER monies, you know, we were looking at tier-two interventions, tier-two, you know, which is, you know, if you're not successful in that classroom. This is, you know, what we, you know, what we've been talking about as an admin team for a while now is, you know, we need to go and help, you know, help our teachers be successful with the students that they, you know, that they have in, in front of them. And, you know, and, you know, we have, we have some, you know, incredibly wonderful teachers in the district. And it's, you know, it's working with them to, you know, to support students, you know, and not, you know, and not see them need to come out and get, you know, have, you know, have us, you know, hiring additional layers of tier-two supports, but hopefully have that initial classroom experience be as best as it can be.
So you kind of hit the nail on the head for me in terms of the question I would like to ask, which is, you know, are the teachers wanting these curriculum people or would they really rather have people in the classroom? And the other, the other thing that I think ties into that is you have had a lot of retirements. You've had higher, you know, earning people leave the system. Now you have younger people entering, which is wonderful, but I imagine they need more support as well. And so I understand that that could help with the curriculum with what you just said. But I would also imagine if you're a young, new teacher, it's probably better to have somebody in the classroom supporting you, helping you to whatever extent that there's people available. So to me, the question would be, on a higher level, if the curriculum people you're saying can help more people across the board, educators, but are the educators saying, that's where I need the help? To me, that's the question to be asking. And, and I guess my question to you is, has that question been asked to your staff across all the schools? Is that where they see the, the help?
I, I, I think that some do, some, you know, you know, some, yeah, some I'm sure, you know, think, you know, think differently. But I, yeah, but I think the, um, you know, to get, you know, to go back to one of your points, we definitely have, uh, we have a, a change in staff demographics. And one of the things that I also raised at the housing huddle, you know, is, is a challenge when, you know, when we're having people that we offer jobs to, you know, you have that, that person, it's like, okay, here's the, here's the first choice that, you know, that I have or even that Joe has, you know, for a, you know, for a townside position. And they can't find a job, you, you end up, you know, going down the list and, you know, and then you're hiring somebody who, you know, who is going to need more supports, you know, so again.
Meaning they couldn't find housing is what you meant, right?
Right, right.
They couldn't find a place to live.
Right, so, so, you know, so, you know, so we're, you know, we're finding that we have not just newer staff or younger staff, but also staff that need more, you know, more support to get, you know, you know, to get off the ground and be successful.
I think that's all I have.
But no, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to throw you a lifeline here. I think I understand correctly that macro patterns we can discuss, but in terms of this state, we, uh, we abide by line item budgets on the town side, but on the school side, that's a policy decision for administration and for the school committee. So, once we approve your budget, you, you can move money around and that's an acceptable practice. I just want everybody to understand that. So the only specific question I'm going to have first is, on the preschool staffing, are you looking at that to contract that out or to add your staff?
Yeah, adding staff.
Okay, so that's the only, that's the only on-the-ground question I'm going to ask you. The global questions are not really to you, but they're just statements of fact. And how we deal with that, because this situation isn't going away, and Mary, if she were here, would be saying the same thing. On a global basis over 10 years, your budget is up 42.7%. We get to assess 2.5% every year under Prop 2 and 1/2. And within those numbers, the total enrollment, you're projecting may be going down, but the mix of that enrollment is vastly different. That the Chatham portion of that is really tanking. In, in order to be able to put a school together that operates, before you even address how many kids there are, you've got buildings that you have to run and staff. You have some foundational, uh, problems that you can't get around. You can't even open the doors unless you can operate with a certain amount of staff. The mix of that that we're responsible for, and this year, that's pretty stark. They're going up about 100 and something thousand and we're going up a million. So, as I said before, today's fourth graders become tomorrow's eighth graders as they go up in enrollment. We only solve the elementary school problem. Though, that problem of disparity in enrollment is, is going to continue out unless something amazingly different starts happening in Chatham. So, I mean, we really need to have a discussion. It's not so much your discussion as a, a two-town discussion, that this is not sustainable. We, we get 2 and 1/2% to allocate and we're doing 4-point-something every year. It's not that we don't believe that you provide an outstanding school. It's that it just doesn't work within the numbers that we're given, especially with Chapter 70 having gone down because that lifeline got torn away from us too. This kind of blows a hole in what our budget was before we walked into the room today. So that, these aren't answerable questions, but 42.7 is the number over 10 years.
Larry?
Uh, thank you, Don and Julia. Good discussion. I, uh, I first commented, I, I appreciate your presentation. It was very clear. I have to say, I haven't always made that statement in the past. And so they were well done. Let me ask you, I'm just curious, on the circuit breakers, do we break even, does that pretty much cover our costs on? Are we, in the past, sometimes we've come quite deficit.
So, circuit breaker is, it's, by definition, it doesn't cover its costs because it only covers a por- a percentage of costs, eh, over a certain amount. So, you know, you basically, it's like, you take four times the minimum, the, the per pupil average.
Right.
The state does this calculation, they, and they fund a certain percentage over that amount. So, it is just to help reduce the impact of high-cost services, not to.
Well, I just use, this is a form. I hope we keep lobbying the state. They should cover that.
Yeah.
Excuse me, uh, it's a crapshoot, our school has to cover which, which is not, it's not a way to run the, run a bit right.
And it is, and it's hard because it comes after you've spent the money. So then, you know, we spend the money this year, we'll submit that claim to the state and then we get the funds for next year.
Yeah.
But, you know, you've already had to get through the year, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Julie, follow-up?
Um, just in terms of, um, the staff, the administrative staff, at the high school, you have, um, gen, police, principal.
Yeah.
Then you have a.
Two assistants.
Two assistants and then an elementary principal?
Yeah.
Just the two assistants?
Just gen, two assistant principals.
That covers eight through 12.
Yeah.
And what's that, uh, what is it at the middle school?
So it's a principal and an assistant principal at the middle school. The, the middle school is, at the moment, a little less than half the size of the high school's enrollment.
So like 300, is that roughly?
Mid-thwee's.
Okay. And then obviously at the elementary, it's just, it's the principal.
Uh, Harwich has an assistant principal as well.
Does Chatham?
Chatham is just a principal.
Thank you.
Anyone in the public?
Mr. Chairman, at some point I had some questions as well.
Sharon and Joe.
Sharon Fleeger. Now, I am chairman of the Board of Health and this has nothing to do with the Board of Health, just to make it clear. Following on to Julie, um, with the, with the types of, of, of teachers is what I was kind of, you were getting at. I wanted, I wanted to give you a little bit of a story. I have a, a son, he's now 50-some years old, that was dyslexic. And we're going back many years. And what they were able to do for him was not a whole lot. So he struggled through school, high school and college, came out very well, but it was a struggle. I also have a grandson in Colorado and they've come a long, long way in what they can do for those children. And those first young years, I'm going to say from kindergarten to probably six or seven, what they were able to do for him, and they both had dyslexia with letters. So their reading is, is really, and spelling is an issue. He's now in high school and he is a straight A student. And I think it is so important to have teachers that can deal with these children. Now, I pulled up some statistics and I have the link there. One in five children today have at least one or more learning disabilities. So the numbers there are not few. There are a lot of them. And very often in the classroom, they come across as being disruptive. All right, I've been through this, all right? And you find out that what they feel is, it's either to be, it's easier to be disruptive than to say, I can't read. All right, and when that happened to me with my son, it was devastating. It was devastating. And as a parent, back then, you didn't have a lot of help. Today, it's there. And I think to have the teachers in schools that can work with these kids with what they know today and how to do it is so vital, important. To get some of these kids through school and do well throughout their life is really, really important. And I was just, that's all I wanted to say, that I, I follow on with, I, I think those kind of teachers are really, really important. And the more those you have, the program they had out, and I'm just going to say out in Colorado, was, I found amazing. And we did spend a lot of time with him and I was, I was floored at what they were able to do with him. But it took, it took all the way through sixth, seventh, he's now in high school. And, uh, thank you, that he is straight A. So, it can be done. It can be done because many of these children, it's not an IQ level, it's not, they can't learn. It's just some of them have visual, some is with letters, some it's numbers, some it's auditory integration. But it can, they have the tools today to work with these kids and it's important to have the teachers that can do that. So that's all.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I didn't mean to interrupt the public portion because I think that's going to be necessary and important to hear tonight as well. But recognizing that my colleagues in education, because as you know, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Carpenter, Mr. McMillan, myself, Ms. Ellis, we all meet with our counterparts in Chatham on a monthly basis. And I feel your pain where we got the numbers from the governor at 4:15 on a Friday, which is remarkable because it was a, um, a feel-good message from the governor with her first budget because she talks about an 8.2% increase in local aid and considerable increases in Chapter 70. So knowing that you had to update the mo- numbers that you got late Friday and it's, um, a sour look based on Chapter 70, knowing politics as we do in the Commonwealth, this is an, this is a freshman governor with her first budget out of the gate and has made a compelling argument for the Commonwealth to commit to local aid. And your increase is above 50,000. What happens when it goes through the process, through House Ways and Means, Senate Ways and Means Conference Committee, where they're not in an election year and they don't see those rosy numbers? What's the plan if that governor's House one, local aid number, excuse me, Chapter 70 number doesn't hold to the positive side? Because we're already in the negative on local aid, so we're used to it.
Yeah, so we are, so the way the Chapter 70 formula works is you're actually held harmless to the prior year's funding. So the, the minimum amount you can receive is the prior year's Chapter 70 plus a $30 per student. So there is, there is a floor, so, and we're not that far away from it. So, eh, so that, you know, so there is, there is, it can only get so bad, which I guess is, I mean, we're not there yet, but it can't.
So that's Chapter 70, but your net receipts year over year are only up 50 grand.
Yeah.
So those other numbers could change.
So the other numbers are charter tuition, which they do play around with a little bit. But it tends to be to give with one hand and they take with another when they do charter tuition because if they increase their money for charter schools, they also increase the offset to us. And we're actually in, oh, you know, we're in an okay place with our charter tuition right now. And we don't, haven't seen a big increase. So the way the charter tuition formula works is also ridiculously complicated. But the phase out, you, so the, the state charges your tuition fee, but then there is, I guess, probably people persuaded the legislator, there is a, a kind of offset to ease the impact of that on districts. And that phases out over three years. So normally if they do increase with one hand, they increase that offset as well. So we, it tends to come one way or another way. The other stuff, the other stuff is transportation. They've increased transportation. But, I mean, we saw, ours actually went down slightly. I mean, it could go down further, but the other big parts are E and D, which we have control over, and interest, which we, we know is $200,000-ish. So, it can't go, it can't get, it can't go down significantly beyond where it, where it is right now, but it can go down.
And then recognizing that, you know, again, reading the press release from the governor and, um, seeing our local aid numbers not being as much of a decrease as it was in years. So, you know, we're losing less, but we're still. seeing our local aid numbers not being as much of a decrease as it was in years, so, you know, we're losing less, but we're still on the negative side.
Yeah.
To compare our district to a closer district, NOSIT is looking at an almost eight-hundred thousand dollar reduction overall, uh, year over year. And again, that's in the, the governor's House One.
Yeah.
If that trend continues, do we see anybody looking, um, from NOSIT coming back to Montemoy? Do they get concerned by those numbers? Because that's a massive decrease.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think that historically, any time a town on the Cape, or towns on the Cape say, you know, that our budget, a, a school budget's getting impacted, and there's this level of uncertainty out there, you end up seeing school choice applications start coming into a district that is perceived as stable. And, you know, we've seen it, you know, uh, you know, in my ten years here, when, you know, when the district to our west has a budget-challenging year, we'll have thirty parents apply for, you know, a handful of positions in kindergarten. And, you know, so, it, it can, you know, it can happen, but I think that's where, I, I think being, you know, conveying stability is a good thing. Because, like, one of the, one of the numbers that, you know, Michael shared that we were, uh, having proud of is that, you know, that, that offset that we're seeing of families that are choosing to stay. And, and I think that families are choosing to stay because they, you know, they've appreciated the stability that, and the, the quality of the program.
Joe, go ahead.
No, I didn't know if there was a follow-up.
Julie's got, Julie's got more, but I'm gonna last, we're gonna keep this going for about ten more minutes, and then recognize every other topic on the agenda.
So, I think, I think you'll also, I think you'll also see, you know, the superintendents stressing, you know, Tabeacon Hill, just that we can't have the, you know, numbers, you know, numbers changing along, you know, along the way. I know in one of my first years, it may have been my very first year here at Montemoy, we didn't get numbers from the state until, it was like, June, you know, it was after town meeting, and, and, you know, and then suddenly, you know, it was like this big, you know, this big change, and had to go work with the towns, you know, so, you know, I'd, I'd hope that we don't end, you know, end up at that place.
Go ahead, Joe.
I will, um, be relatively brief compared to what I've said before. But you've already heard board, board members talk about the assessment, uh, and what we've just gone through, and, you know, page number twenty, where you, the table that shows the impact of foundation enrollment. That is jarring, I think, for anyone that reads it from a Harwich perspective, where we're going, we're creeping back up to the seventy-seven, twenty-three. And again, members have already talked about it. But how can we address the Harwich voter at town meeting? Where we had so much, I think we had almost two and a half years of discussion on, on how we handle our assessments, and we came to a great conclusion, and now it feels like it's washing away. When you look at the budget needs that you've talked about here, and you've heard the discussion about the pre-K, so I know it's S R funds, but going forward, if we, the town of Harwich, want to keep that pre-K, is that one-hundred percent on Harwich because of the new assessment? Or is that a district cost that gets split seventy-seven, twenty-three?
So, so in terms of pre-K, what we, while, while there's a pre-K program that's in Harwich, there's also an intensive special needs program that is happening at, at Chatham Elementary School, so there's, there's a wash that's happening there. We also, and this is what I'd need to emphasize to those in Chatham, i- is that, is that we want to have a preschool back in Chatham as soon as we have enough kids to make it viable. And, you know, and, you know, and we've had conversations, you know, these, at, you know, at the school committee level, that, you know, I think, I think the, the families of Chatham would like to see the preschool back there. But, you know, but if we only have four, you know, four children, doesn't make a strong cohort for, you know, you know, for a session. You know, so, you know, so, you know, so what we're, you know, what we've tried to do is to balance it by, you know, the preschools that the, you know, that the school district runs, you know, are, you know, are focused on providing a special needs services to, you know, to children that are three and four years old with peer models. But we also are ramping up a program for intensive need elementary children that will house at Chatham Elementary School. And there'll be, you know, there'll be Harwich children who meet that profile that'll be going, you know, that'll be going to that program.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if I could, and it's really just a final comment, because you on the board know, and many of the people assembled here, we have our, our budget meeting, joint meeting with the finance committee this Saturday morning, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But when you compare the cost and, for the town of Harwich, for all of the general fund, departmental operating budgets, it's slightly over thirty million. And we're now talking about just Harwich's assessment for the schools, it's just under twenty-eight point five million. And so, there's a small delta there for everything the town of Harwich has to provide and our commitment to our school. Now, I've never been one in my career, my career started out serving on a school committee. I've never been one to pit, uh, town versus education. But we're reaching that equilibrium where it's not only, where we have to have, and I defer to the board on that, and I agree with the board, we have to go back to the table to talk about the assessment process, because the pressures on the department heads in town haven't gone away. And that's assuming the numbers get approved as we presented them. So, um, you know, we're starting to reach that equilibrium, and it's a little bit concerning.
Thank you, Joe.
I thank my colleagues for their time tonight.
Great. Julie, any follow-up?
The only thing I wanted to say was, uh, just following up on, uh, the point Sharon made, which is, you know, during COVID, kids weren't even being assessed by nurses, right? I mean, so they're even in the school system without having, maybe some things, learning difficulties or emotional difficulties identified. And so, then, that puts even more on your nurses, because not only are you already seeing more emotional and social issues, but you're also seeing that, I think it's been reinstated that they're going back to do the hearing tests, the, you know, all of that.
All the screenings.
Yeah.
All the screenings. So, I can imagine that you're gonna have more identified, and so you need more help, I would say, in the classroom, and probably, you're, you probably need to put your nurse back in your budget, because how do you do all that? You only have one nurse each, right, at each? Not even?
We have more than that.
Yeah.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Depends on the school, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, I just thought it was a good point that Sharon made, and it's just another impact on the budget. But again, to me, that's an important resource as well.
Thank you, Julie. Don, Larry, any? I'm sure this isn't the last meeting, so we'll look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Right, next up is, uh, asked to approve a hundred-dollar fee, waiver request for room rental at two oh four Sisson Road, submitted by a member of the Harwich Climate Action Network. Anyone wanna make a motion or start conversation? Go ahead, Don.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I know how the chair feels about this in general. And, and I get it, because this is starting to get out of control, we're getting all kinds of requests. But it isn't that big, and I'm not gonna make a motion. I brought a check with me tonight, I'd be happy to pay it for him and not have this discussion, because we can't keep getting requests to waive fees. We're never gonna assess a fee ever again if we do that. So, that's my offer.
Thank you, Don. Larry?
Well, thank you, Don, because I did have reservations about.
Julie?
I said, get your check out. No.
You mean this right here? Who do I make it out to, Joe?
Joe, do we have any, there's no problem with that, correct?
I'm paying for the application fee.
I wish you hadn't asked me open any questions.
It's a, it's a private.
I would defer to the selectmen in that group, and we could go that way.
It's made up to the town of Harwich, though?
It's to Julie Kavanaugh.
Representing the town of Harwich.
All right, well, we're not taking it up.
I'll talk to them later, don't worry about it.
I'm gonna move on from this topic. No action taken is what I'm putting as a note, Joe.
That's what I have.
Thank you. Discussion on twenty-twenty-two Annual Town Meeting Petition Article Fifty-seven regarding two oh four Sisson Road. Uh, I believe there was an article in the Chronicle, but I had also been approached by the gentleman that was gonna write the article, asking why the Board of Selectmen was ignoring Article Fifty-seven, which was a petition article, non-binding article, asking the Board of Selectmen to raise an appropri, or town meeting to raise and appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars to hire X amount of consultants and expert to tell us what to do with two oh four Sisson Road. I do remember there was fairly heavy debate on that article. Uh, I do remember, I think it was about twelve o'clock or a little later that we talked about that. I'm not sure how many people were left in the room. I believe the moderator even, even, uh, towards the end, to try and end the night, said, um, "They're not asking you, they're telling you they have money, so they're not asking you for money," and the motion did pass. So, this is a conversation on the article, Article Fifty-seven, on whether or not we are ignoring the article and the will of town meeting. My own opinion, and I have told the gentleman that approached me on it, is that we are not. We've had two committees study that building. Two committees have come back that the best use of that building is a municipal use, it is not a cultural center. We've done a significant amount of work in that building. We have, uh, had an overwhelmingly passing budget, which was, which allowed us to bring in a new department head to work in that building and work on the cultural parts of that building. We have our own experts in town, our, our maintenance division, who has been in there and put together capital needs of the building. I don't believe we're ignoring the article, and I believe that this board has taken this up several times. It is not a cultural center. The full board, five to zero, supported the continued use as we're using it, and, and said that we would like the department head that's over there to work with the town administrator and other appropriate departments to continue to assess the building and to continue to build a plan. Our employee hasn't been on for a year yet, and we've already made great progress. I see that there's several of the tenants of the building here tonight, um, which they have been showing up more and more to show their support of the building. I know that there was a meeting with the town administrator, and Joe, we discussed that the other day. When are we gonna do a deep dive on what's going on in the cultural, not cultural center, two oh four Sisson Road, March seventh?
Uh, in your next meeting, March sixth.
March sixth, the next meeting, uh, town administrator and the department head are gonna come forward and tell us what they have done for progress and where we're going with this. And if you look at the explanation of Article Fifty-seven, a lot of what is being asked is exactly what we're doing. We're just not hiring a consulting firm from out of town to try and tell us what to do with one of our town assets. Instead, we are treating the asset as it should be treated. Joe, I'm gonna turn it over to you before I go to the gentleman that asked for this, um, conversation, and then the board. Anything to add from what I said?
Well, briefly, nothing really different from what I've said before. Relying upon my background and experience, and knowing that we, uh, the town sought guidance from council, the petitioned article relates to a municipal building. Municipal buildings are the purview of the Board of Selectmen under statute. And so, generally speaking, even if the article is passed, it does not compel the Board of Selectmen to do anything. So, if the board's going to do anything, that's because it's a board action and a discussion amongst yourselves. Other than that, I'd just be more readily available to answer questions about past studies and information available.
Thank you. I'll start with anyone in the public which, that wishes to speak on this.
John Chori, and I'm the gentleman that spoke to the board, and, and Michael, thank you for putting this on the agenda and stuff. And, uh, and I, just for informational purposes, I am the past chairman of the finance committee, and I was in, at chairman at the time at town meeting floor, uh, when we discussed this article. And you, you talked about a non-binding, uh, piece right now. That's what you may think as a selectman, that's what Joe may think, even town council may think. But the people that in town meeting didn't think like that, I don't think. They voted for Article Fifty-seven. And it was spelled out what Article Fifty-seven was. And I can read you the whole article tonight, but I'm not gonna do that. You know, I, I come before you tonight because I've been asking this board, uh, many times, for over a couple of years, for some very precise information on that building, and have not received that. To this day, I have not received any information on that building that I've been asking for. The primary informa, and first of all, I am for two oh four Sisson, I am for the cultural center. And to hear you say now that it's not a cultural center, half the people in this room are for the cultural center here. So, they think one thing, you're thinking another. You've got forty classrooms in that building. From what I understand, that forty is gonna go down to what?
Uh, John, if, if I can answer you, it is not a cultural center.
Okay.
There is, and, and we've been very clear on that for the past year. And, and I don't think anyone can say, even going to the name change of two oh four Sisson Road, it is a municipal building, and there is a cultural aspect to that building. And I'll say it to the artists, you're very important to this board. We have not swayed once, as a board, to change the artists or the cultural events that are happening in that building. And I know that there has been a lot of talk, but I don't see any selectmen jumping out of their seats to say otherwise. We have not swayed from supporting the artists that are in that building, and that conversation has never happened. It is a municipal building, and as the town administrator pointed out several meetings ago, a certain percentage of that be, building needs to be cultural, and a certain percentage of that be, building needs to be municipal. And to my statement prior to anyone speaking, it is on March sixth, we're gonna do a deeper dive into the actual activities and get some suggestions from staff on that building. So, it's not a cultural center, and I stand by that.
Okay, well, that's, that's, again, a lot of people may think differently on that, but that's, it is what it is on that. But as I say, I'm, I'm for whatever it's decided for this building to become. Cultural center, municipal building, affordable housing, whatever you want. We just went through a whole affordable housing thing with the school system. That might be a, a good choice, but I know there's reasons for that. Okay, Article Fifty-seven, I just got about five or six bullet points. You've heard them before, but I just wanna re, I want to clear my conscience of, uh, of town meeting, because I went in there, my board went in there understanding of voting seventy-five thousand dollars for a feasibility study to be done on that building to get some answers, because we haven't got the answers. And we, I still haven't got the answers, and I've, and I've been coming. You, I've been to the sec, this board two or three times, I've written each of you letters, I've put articles in the Chronicle, and I still haven't gotten the answers. So, maybe this deep dive will reveal some of those answers. And there's about two items that I, I want, really want. So, Article Fifty-seven passed, and it was to develop a comprehensive plan for cultural affairs, recreational program, probable staffing plans, and here's the most important one, the one I've been plugging for, is at least a five-to-eight-year capital plan. And I've heard one year in Joe's, uh, two oh four Sisson report, there's only one year of capital in this, in this budget, and I'll get to that later, too. I have heard, I've read, I've watched the capital budget outlay committees, and I only see a three-year plan in there for capital. The town asked for a five-to-eight. I would even go a little bit further, at, to ten years. And I'd love to see Sean Libby show up at this March sixth deep dive and give his opinion of what the true capital costs for that building are over an eight-to-ten-year period. That is the number-one criteria of what I'm trying to get to. Because if it's five million, ten million, fifteen million, those are numbers, but the town needs to know what that number is. Right now, they're looking at one number, it's two million dollars coming up in this year's town budget for, for capital expenses, and I'll get to those capital expenses, too. Part of it was a business plan, a strategic plan, on what that building was going to be. I thought we thought it was a cultural center. This municipal building, maybe town hall sprung up, in my opinion, in only the last six or seven months. Right at town meetings, the first time I've heard municipal use, that's the first time I've heard that, was always being delivered as a cultural center. And that's what most people thought, I think, at town meeting when they voted for this. I went back to the video, I watched the video two or three times, because it was over eight months, nine months ago. And in that meeting, it was over, made statements over and over again that the study would involve both Board of Selectmen, the finance committee, capital outlay committee, town administrator, many professionals in the town willing to donate their time, and the general public. I don't think you've had one public hearing on this since town meeting, have you? A public hearing, not just a selectance meeting where it's come up for five or ten minutes and then gone away. A public hearing addressing all those people. Have you? Have you?
I don't recall the words "public hearing" being used, John. Public meetings, I do recall.
No, public meetings you've had, but a public hearing, you said at Town Meeting you would involve the public, the general public in this.
Well, I, I see members of the public here again tonight, John.
A public hearing is entirely different than a public meeting, Michael, and you know that. Okay, so that's, no public hearing has been held. Okay, a public hearing.
So we said public hearing is, is, I just want to be clear, so when I respond. You're saying that it was said by the Board of Selectmen on Town Meeting floor that we were going to have a public hearing.
No, no, it wasn't.
Okay, so why do you keep saying, and I, I'm sorry to correct you, but why do you keep saying "public hearing"? And I know you know the difference between a public hearing and a public meeting.
Right.
We have had multiple public hearings on 204, so you and I aren't going to just debate this back and forth? I'm going to let you finish, but for clarity, we never said "public hearing."
Okay.
And we've had several public meetings. Here's another one with participants.
Okay. You're, you're true, hundred percent true.
Okay.
But a public hearing is much different.
Go ahead and finish, I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
But most importantly, a statement was made by Mr. McCaslin yourself, that the study would be to not be done in a vacuum, and there's been no formal report done. This is the closest thing to a formal report, and that's not even close to a formal report, in my opinion. It doesn't address all the other things. It was stated at, at, at the Town Meeting that, that Sisson was closed for two years. It wasn't never closed. It was closed to the general public, but it was still operating as a cultural center with artisans paying rent. We made money, or took in money, we didn't make any, we haven't made a dime in that building, but we took in money, revenues came in during those COVID years. Many former selectmen and Finance Committee, former Finance Committee, Capital Outlays spoke in favor of this article, and they, in fact, they didn't spoke in favor of funding this article at seventy-five percent, because a lot of those folks in that meeting were much more wise on the workings of town government than I am. I'm slowly learning more and more, but they distinctly said, if we go this way of not funding it, it's never going to happen. And they're correct. It's never going to happen. The selectmen, again, back to capital is the most important one to my, the selectmen are asking for roughly two million dollars of capital this year in this Town Meeting. Some of that is for boilers, automatic transfer switches with the generator attached to that, auditorium lighting, sound system, seating, a new fire alarm system. How can you go ahead and, and ask for that money, commit the money, and put those capital items in when you don't know what you're going to use the building for? How can you size a boiler properly for a building you don't even know what you're going to put in the building yet? You can't size a generator or a transfer switch until you know what's going in that building. You can't put a fire alarm system in that building without knowing what's going in that building. The configuration is going to change under government municipal offices versus open classrooms. A kitchen, you, has been totally talked about in there for a while. Upgrades to the auditorium, lighting, sound systems, seating. How big are these auditorium things going to be? Are they going to be just a couple of dance recitals? We don't know any of that, so we need, we need the cultural programming of what, and it has to be defined before another dime is spent in that building, in my opinion. And that's, that's all we're asking for, is a true cost of that building for five to eight years as the article spelled out in there. And that's all that I'm asking for, and I think you should have Sean Libby, I'm not going to tell you what to do, but it's suggesting Sean Libby at this deep dive, which I really don't understand what that is, but, you know, but I think Sean would be a very good source of in, of information at this meeting. And it's a wonderful thing, this cultural center. You can't call it a cultural center, even, whatever you want to call it, 204 Sisson, it's a wonderful thing. It's got many, one thing that you really did say, and I really appreciate, you said a lot of nice things, Mike, you know that, but what you said at Town Meeting was, you're trying to build a building that has multiple uses where multiple citizens can participate in. We have a beautiful golf course. Well, you have to play golf to go to the golf course usually. You have a beautiful harbor, you can have a boat usually to go to the harbor. But this building, you've got basketball, soccer, pickleball, I know everybody loves pickleball. You've got a potential with the, with the, with the cooking of it. I've talked to Kara a number of times over there, she's a wonderful addition to this thing. She's brought new life to that building. The artisans are all here tonight, supporting that. But at what cost is that thing? If you move municipal offices in there, there's no air conditioning in that building. You can't stick cube air conditioners in the windows and expect that to work. There's no internet generally in that building. Of the five items on the capital plan this year for this year's two million dollars, those are five items of twenty-one items that I sent this board over a year and a half ago asking numbers for, still haven't received those numbers. So that's the number-one thing on my mind, what the cost of that building truly is for five or six years. Don mentioned, yeah, Don mentioned the school committee was putting the boilers in. He brought up an excellent point there. You put a brand-new boiler in, how are you going to control that boiler?
I saw you smile when he said that.
Yeah, because that was in my list. To control that boiler, you have to have what they call digital controls in all those rooms. Digital controls for a building of that size.
I don't want to cut you off.
Hundred thousands of dollars.
Thank you. I don't want to cut you off.
That's it.
And I don't think you give yourself enough credit for your knowledge of municipal government, how it works. And thank you, thank you for bringing this up. I could go point for point with you.
I know, I could go point for point.
But I'm not going to. It's a, you know, one thing that you said four or five times, in your opinion. And then, just so there's no confusion with the Chronicle tomorrow, and there's no confusion with anyone watching tonight, we have a five-year capital plan. And that five-year capital plan, though we haven't voted it yet this year, so it's not official, shows the capital needs for that building that we are going to approve when we vote at the one point nine or two point one two five million.
Yeah.
That's what we're asking the public for. Don't make any mistake about it.
Yeah.
That's what we're asking the public for. It'll be Joe's decision on whether, or a board member's decision on whether they want Sean Libby here or not. We're not hiding anything, because that's our five-year capital plan. And we look at other buildings in town, the historic building, we're putting a two-million-dollar foundation under that right now.
Don't get me going on that.
That brings in, that brings in no revenue. But the point is, Town Meeting overwhelmingly voted a Director of Cultural Affairs, overwhelmingly, when we had a full quorum and it wasn't twelve o'clock at night. The Town Administrator is a professional, he's working on this. The board is having multiple, multiple meetings on this building, and it is a deeper dive, not a deep, deep dive. But we are, we are making progress, and I think everybody will be happy with that progress. Your opinion and others' opinions are certainly valuable opinions, but there's a whole nother side to those opinions. And people are very happy with what we're doing with that building, and it's going to be work in progress for a long time. We're building something, we're bringing in revenue, the revenue can be respent on the building. This board is not just saying, let's throw money out the window. Though some people say. I'm going to go, not back to you, but I'm going to go to the Town Administrator and see if he wants to add, then I'm going to get in on the board, and I do now want to keep this a hundred percent about Article fifty-seven.
Right.
And then next week, we'll bring the whole group back in and everybody can say what they think of the building.
But the capital is only three years, Mike, so.
It doesn't matter, it's a five-year plan, just because there's a broken line and there's a zero number in there or a space in there, it's still a five-year plan when we vote it. And in order to change the five-year plan, we have to, we have to revote, right, Don?
Yes, two-thirds would say.
Joe?
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, John.
First, I want to just clarify something. When I talked about topics coming before the board next week, it was to seek guidance from the board on potential requests for proposals on what the board wants to have conducted in that municipal building. Meaning, we have a municipal building right next to what it was, the Alborough House. Aside from the government operation that is in there, the tenant is in there because the town issued an RFP and engaged in a three-year contract. So that's what I intend the discussion to be next week. If you're looking for a deeper dive, as it's been referred to, that's not what I was anticipating. I was anticipating talking about request for proposal for cultural programming and request for proposal for human and social service programming.
Well, you and I will discuss that Tuesday morning, and we will probably be adding more, maybe not the deep, deep dive, but we will probably be adding more to say what has been done to answer some of the questions that the public's asking. But you and I will discuss that Tuesday morning.
And then the only other thing I want to put out there is, I, I remain confused. The building at 204 Sisson Road was closed from two thousand fourteen to two thousand sixteen. Two thousand fourteen, on September first, two thousand fourteen, it was remanded back to the town of Harwich to the Board of Selectmen. Remanded back. It has always been a municipal building for municipal use. Back when there was a single school system, that was the municipal use. So I am confused by this concept that it was a private building. The town never failed to meet its obligation to ensure its public building. Whatever previous administrators called it, notwithstanding, it remains a municipal building. And that is a central point that others, I think, are sowing confusion, because we can't reach agreement on that simple fact. And unless and until we do, there's nothing I can say next week, there's nothing I can say tomorrow, there's nothing I can say in the future if we don't understand that 204 Sisson Road, precisely as 732 Main Street is, is a municipal building and therefore is handled the way we've been handling it.
Well, and I believe this board unanimously acquiesced to that a month and a half ago, Joe, so there's no confusion at this table.
Sure, and I get that, I know there's no confusion at this table.
Okay. Julie, I'll start with you.
I just will say that I continue to support the both municipal and cultural use of 204 Sisson. We voted it, God, I think it was two thousand sixteen. And so I think that it's grown in leaps and bounds. I love to see what's going on there, and really don't have any other questions, except to say that we've had multiple meetings, public meetings, on that situation.
Thank you. Larry?
Well, we certainly hold it. I do, and I am sympathetic to John's point, because I do, I would feel more comfortable personally if we had a, a more of a plan going forward, because we've talked about what spaces may be usable for municipal uses, which may configure, and, you know, we still have capital budget items without having a better sense of where, where we're going. You know, we, we are making positive, but I, I still come back to that. I would like to be, have, have that more detailed.
Larry, I'll agenda that again, but we've had, we've talked about this ad nauseam, and, and when asked a direct question to board members, board members either ask the direct question or they don't, and then we all acquiesce to Joe's last plan that he submitted to us. We all said that that was the direction we were going. I've said from the beginning, if the public wants me to put a business plan together, which I've done many of, and I can pull numbers out of the sky and, and, and bring anything forward, I will.
I'm not asking for that. What I'm asking for is, is we have a draft of some potential ideas of what part of that building could be used for municipal and what not, what's not. I would ask for that, not a business plan per se, but some more detail, because if we're talking about boilers and all this, we should have a better idea. It's not just in general, in general conscious. I also, and I, and I do appreciate where Carr, I think, has reached out to some regional, I wanted to look at that. I want to use that building to the best possible use, and does that mean reaching out to our neighbors, do some things that we might do better here, we might use their facilities or something else? I'd like that general discussion as well. We have a tremendous opportunity, and I'm a little concerned that if we're looking at bringing in, you know, Sean Libby to see what repairs are there as is without looking at where we can go, we're making a mistake.
Thank you, Larry, and you have been consistent with that. I just, it was three meetings ago when we discussed this, and, and I said, will you get with the Town Administrator and tell him exactly what you're looking for? I believe you had that conversation, and it didn't come out that you were looking for that. So that is going to be our next agenda item, along with what we're bringing back next week. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I didn't bring my scuba gear, so I'm not going to go into a deep dive or any kind of a dive here. Just broadly, though, I have said in the past, and I still feel kind of where Larry's coming from, that there was an expectation coming out of that meeting, not about who gets assigned what particular room, but it was about trying to get to hold the stakeholders, both existing and potential, and get them into a meeting and talk about aspirational stuff, like this is what we do like, and this is what we really could use, and then establish a framework that would result in some sort of revenue plan for this. That's my concern, that we, we've had meetings that are more like top-down, where we hold a meeting and this is what we're doing. Or if we put this RFP out, I'm not even sure how that would work, because which one of the people that occupies a room is going to bid on an RFP about the cultural use of that building?
So.
I mean, I'm just saying that when we do this discussion, I would like to have the parameters that we also have a meeting of some sort with both townside people and stakeholders and potential stakeholders to have just a basic idea of where we're going with this.
So, and I'll just answer that with, that's what Joe's doing next week. So that's what he's bringing back next week. And as far as the RFP goes, there's a certain amount of laws that are involved in this. So we signed a bunch of leases before under direction of the last Town Administrator, and we weren't supposed to lease it. Licensing agreements are more appropriate for what we're doing. Joe has brought that level of expertise into this. Joe has had a stakeholders meeting, we have not yet, because we have to get through this first hurdle first. But in every meeting that I can remember, including the one that had the colored picture of middle school, I'm going to call it, on the front of, because we haven't referred to it as that yet, even that one had a plan, and board members have been asked specific questions, and other than the indirect costs and, and what Larry had asked for and that you had agreed, nobody has changed the direction of the Town Administrator and the department head on moving forward on this building. Nobody.
I did actually question the use of the auditorium and who was going to use it and what that use pattern would be, so I have brought that up.
Right, well, that, that one piece, fine, I'll, I'll acquiesce to that, but there's not, nobody has challenged this on the board, and if we're going to, it's time that we do, because the public needs direction, too. But it's, it's every time somebody stands up and says what we haven't done, then somebody questions what we haven't done, and they've done an awful lot of work, and we've had an awful lot of meetings. It's a, it is a little frustrating to see us go backwards on this, because we all, I asked the question of everybody, are we going to go forward with this building, and everybody answered yes.
And I still feel that way.
Without conditions.
And I still feel that way.
So I'm going to leave it at that, I'm going to bring it back on the sixth. Other people are antsy about other topics. Julie, did you have something?
I just want to say, we did talk about Town Hall over there, it's many times, so that was not in the last six or seven months, so. We, we've talked about everything about this building for quite some time, so I, I don't mind bringing it back, but.
Anyone in the public wish to talk about Article fifty-seven, not how great the building is or what we need? No? Okay.
By the way, it was the high school.
Thank you, Don. John, coming back, a little more detail, probably not a lot of detail, but coming back.
Capital, capital.
Yeah. All right. Let's go on to Board of Health, as there was a request made or a suggestion made to add two alternate members. Joe, can you tell us why we can't do that? I know that's where you're going.
No, that isn't actually.
Well, no, I will not accept that challenge. And I will defer to, to, to board members, but as you know and as you'll see in the memorandum to you from our Health Director, both the Town Charter, Chapter Seven, Section Four outlines the composition or outlines or the creation of a Board of Health. And within that, it draws us to Chapter Seven of the General Bylaws, Article Three, Boards and Committees. And when you read that, that bylaw states that the Board of Health shall be five members. So to accomplish what's being requested, would at the very least, in my non-legal opinion, require a general, general bylaw amendment, which could be effected at the annual Town Meeting in sixty-four days? I do not, and I would have to defer to council as to whether there would need to be a similar or some sort of charter change.
Thank you, Joe. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I was going to talk about something else along with this, but as far as I know, because I, for years, and I've had this discussion with you as, as, on the interview committee, that the state law, while it may afford this, it's somewhat similar to the Planning Board. They don't have the ability, because their power derives, their power derives from mass general law, primarily. So we can't violate that. And much like the Planning Board, their alternates that are in use elsewhere are constrained to a very narrow purpose, and they're not going, they're not capable of being used in general to plug in for a meeting, to do the... general to plug in for a meeting, to do the quarums or whatever. You can't establish a quorum from somebody who's only there for a particular purpose because they can't vote on anything else. So that having been said, the town administrator is correct. You'd have to change the charter, which, well, the charter and the, the bylaws would have to be changed. The only good news I can give you is that in practice, the change of the charter language the board unanimously recommended to bring forward to us to add our healthcare into the mix has been loosely adhered to in practice for probably the last 20 years. We have never split hairs over the difference between a public health person and a healthcare person. We've actually allowed that to slide as an equivalency. So putting that in would probably be helpful to be more explicit about what we're looking to do, but that hasn't ever precluded anybody that I know of in 20 years.
Larry?
Well, I take the discussion on the bylaws that we'd have to do something. I do, Don, have a bit of a different opinion on what the role of an alternate can be. I think, Joe, I questioned you on this one time, and I'd like to get follow-up on this because my understanding is, is that an alternate can fill in for a full member if that full member is not there, and the chair so declares, and he promises to be there for the duration of that hearing if he comes back. And I'd like to clarify that. You're probably right, Don, but I'd like to...
It's a statutory thing, it's not a town thing.
Joe, you get that clarified for Larry? Please?
Because I know I, at that meeting some years ago, I think, I forget whether ZBA or planning, in which they had two alternates, maybe that's different than Board of Health, but they, they actually did an interesting activity in which, of the, there was a five board member, I forget, and there were seven people there. The chair asked at the time, which five of those seven wish to hear that hearing? And then they carried it through. They had to promise to be there for the whole thing. So I just want to clarify whether...
But they couldn't do site plans on a planning board, for instance. It's a use special permit.
I'm sure you're right, Don, but I'd like to clarify that before we...
Ask them, we'll get that answered. And really, for me, it's, it really came up and it was asked if we could do it. And I think it's a great idea for a training ground for new members so that they can see what's, whether they can vote or not vote. It's a great training ground for new people to be on a, on a committee and learn on it, especially on a regulatory board.
I think you'd agree to.
I think, Don, you're saying they can't be on the committee often at all.
No, I would actually defer to what Michael's saying. I'm saying their usefulness on being on a committee is fairly limited because it's not about our charter, it's about the state statutes, and MEHB probably is a good starting point to get in touch with.
I'm sure you're right, Don, but this is, double check.
Okay.
Julie, anything?
No.
Joe, anything you want to add?
No, I understood the question from Selectmen Valentine, and, you know, the short answer is there are different levels of regulatory boards, and every example that was used were regulatory boards. But it's a simple question to post to council.
Thank you. Sharon? And Sharon, where this is going is we're going to get some clarification, and then we're going to re-agenda this for a charter change if, and let the board vote on whether or not they want to put an article together for that.
Okay. I just want to follow up with Dawn, Don. Yeah, what we wanted to do is add healthcare because, like you said, the way it's worded, that I know of, we don't really have a physician. And then they say public health. So by adding healthcare, it includes all of us that are on there, so I think it makes us somewhat more compliant. That was an easy one. Okay, as far as the, adding the alternates, Michael, I did send you something from Massachusetts. And the way we read that, and Katie's online, so if I'm speaking, if I don't get it straight, she can correct me. One of the things that, with that, that it doesn't say you can or you can't have alternates. So the fact that it doesn't preclude you from having it, you kind of read into it that you could. Now, the question of voting, I believe Katie thought maybe there's a possibility on, maybe not regulatory voting, but maybe on variances, so she's not sure either. And that would be the question we had, again, going back to that as to what they could or couldn't vote on. Our understanding would be, and what has happened a couple of times, is when people are out for various reasons, all right, and you're looking for discussion on a particular topic, this would allow the alternate to sit in and at least take part of the discussion. Maybe not the vote, but it's good to have, if you've only got three people there in that particular day, that limits the discussion on the topic. So what we're looking for is, and we've had people that had to be out for various reasons, it's handy to have enough people there to have a good discussion on the topic. So that's the reason for having the alternate. But we would need clarification as to what they could vote on, and then, again, I guess that bylaws and/or charter, whatever changes, has to go to the town. And that's really what we're looking for. So that's just kind of a clarification, and I know Katie's online, so she wants to add something. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Katie, do you want to add anything or are you comfortable with the conversation? Dr. Katie?
She turned off.
There you go.
Unmute.
Yeah, no, she's unmuted, it's green, so... Katie, Katie, we can't hear you, but whatever you could give to the town administrator tomorrow morning would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we leave this, maybe to the chair, do you have the relevant state law that governs boards of health generally? Is it Chapter 111?
Yes. Yes, we do, yes.
And Dr. O'Neal, is it Chapter 111?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. So generally speaking, just looking at that, that stands if there's no charter or bylaw. The charter and bylaw supersede that presently, so we first have to work with local law.
Yes.
So anything we want to do is going to start at the local level if we want to change it to include alternates. So there's a whole host of ways you could go with this, but short story long, our charter and bylaw are very prescriptive.
Thank you.
And that's the answer.
This is a two-level conversation, though. Can we add the numbers, and if so, what do they get to do?
And that's the clarification you're going to get for Larry, and then I'll bring the topic back. We done with this one?
Yep.
Thank you. Discussion on Mass Department of Transportation, DOT Route 28 West Harwich sidewalk project. Duncan, thank you for coming tonight. Sorry about the two-hour delay.
Not at all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Town Administrator. Just wanted to, before I get to that, I wanted to say thank you for giving us a town planner. It has been, you know, a long time without, without long-term service, and Paul has been excellent. I mean, honestly, we're like a seamless connection into the workflow. I'm very happy, the board's very happy. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Great work, Paul.
Yeah, bravo. Pay me later, by the way. The, what I wanted to address is that I think there's been some slippage in the six-year history of the TIP project for West Harwich. And what we have is, initially, there was a site visit, then we had two brainstorming sessions, then we had our special district take place, then we had a conceptual design, and then we had COVID. We've had changes in the personnel at VHB, there's been change in the personnel over at Mass DOT, and lo and behold, some of us who have been paying attention have watched this drift. So I just want to make sure that, you know, at the planning board, we're concerned that the stuff that we saw on January 24th was, kind of contravenes the special district character language that we're into. So we don't want to violate that. Second thing is, is there's a little bit of unclarity about what was presented to us as a 75% plan was actually a markup of a 50% plan that was never presented to the public. We've only seen a concept plan and a 25% plan. So we're kind of all over the place, and I just wanted to ask you, and this won't take any longer than the school board budget discussion.
Oh, please.
Merci. I just wanted to ask if you could please track with us with the planning board, all liaise with whoever you want. Don is, I guess, our liaison formally, but I think if we have a, kind of a unified voice in this from two different levels, giving kind of a symphonic message from below saying, "Look, you guys, you know, what they put in here was really not what we talked about to begin with, and it wasn't what they started with." And we're like, we're looking at the kind of thing, you know, when you go around the bend at the factory shoe mart at 48 miles an hour, that's what they're looking at doing where we have, you know, 44 driveways. That is not acceptable. And, you know, so, anyway, I'd appreciate your support. We'll communicate if we could get a letter perhaps to say, can you put the brakes on? Let's evaluate what we have, what's the inventory, the comments that were taken on January 24th. Let's see if we can stipulate a couple of things for that we would like, and then just track them accordingly. That's all I'm asking for, so...
Thank you, Duncan.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, oh, and Link, thank you. I'm sorry, I have not connected with you on this, my bad.
That's okay. Link has sent me some information.
Okay, great.
Link has had some conversations on the state level, and Link stuck around for two hours tonight to tell us what he, what he has learned. So Link, will you just tell Duncan and us what you have learned in your conversations with the state?
Okay, I'd like to just correct, correct the record just begin with, and then get into some of the details. What was presented at the hearing in January was a 25% design hearing. They were, there were some discussions there which may have been misinterpreted about accelerating a, the next 75% submission and so forth, and combining maybe a 75 with 100. Although this project is slated for advertising in the fall of 2024, there's really not a lot of time by Mass DOT standards, primarily with the right-of-way being the, because they do their own right-of-way, that process takes about a year. I certainly appreciate Duncan's comments. We did a lot of public outreach, 15, 16, 17, I don't, I'm the one person that's still been around here all these times. Yes, Selectmen Hall, you as well. We did involve the public as much as we could. We went on a public site walk where we watched, walked the corridor, we took in, we had a public brainstorming session. We've had the Cape Cod Commission as an ally the entire time. We really opened this up, but I was very clear back then that these projects take a five-to-seven-year window to materialize. There's a pecking order, there's a waiting line because the, the Cape gets, I don't know, about $12 million that we have to divide up amongst all the towns that have these projects. So it takes time for that, the funding to be materialized. I would like to say that I was surprised at how amenable DOT has been in that some of the asks during those brainstorming sessions, they've agreed to. They've, they've already agreed to continue the brick sidewalk up to the Baptist Church. They've agreed to have streetlights that emulate the ones in Dennisport up to the Baptist Church. They've contracted, and I know your group, or some people had reservations about granite curbing, but by having granite curbing on the project, you contract the footprint of the project, meaning there's less impacts to private property. They're going to throw a lot of trees and green space out behind this build. So I've personally found them to be quite amenable. Second, they're in the process of developing a meeting with Duncan and his group and whoever else I think is concerned about this thing, and they were asking me my availability next month. So I think this meeting should happen fairly quickly. That came down from the head honcho at DOT that they wanted, where they had received, I don't know, a dozen or so emails from some of the people that were concerned and had participated with this. There's a 10-day window. I think you were told today at the MPO meeting that they would still continue to accept comment even though the formal period had ended, and I believe they gave you information on who to send that to. So I personally, I see how somebody from the outside could feel like they haven't been listened to. Some of those suggestions, such as route bike traffic down, we tried. We submitted that. DOT's got standards, and they've got federal standards that they have to build to. And finally, what's been very frustrating for me personally, on another project, we have a Safe Routes to School sidewalk project, DOT in 2020 had directives that changed their criteria, particularly with the complete streets are involved. So every time they do a project, they're supposed to have X, Y, and Z, like 12-foot lanes out on a, on a road. They've already acquiesced to 11-foot lanes to try to keep speed down. They are mandated where it can fit in a right-of-way, 12, I mean, 10-foot multimodal paths. 10-foot multimodal paths. This doesn't sound too bad, there's two 5-foot sidewalks, right? No, it isn't, because it's got to be separated, it's a bigger build. And that's what we're up against, is in 2020, their directives changed the way they conduct business. And that affected this project as well as some other projects. Whenever you're taking somebody else's money, and this project is now in excess of $8 million, when you're taking somebody else's money, there's strings attached. And there, and DOT standards and federal highway standards are what's attached to this and driving much of it. But honestly, I think DOT's been as amenable as I've ever seen them. And design exceptions are becoming harder and harder to come by. And, and, you know, internally, I think DOT is also at war with your transportation folks, you know, your bike and ped folks, and they don't necessarily always align. And we're sometimes caught in the middle.
Thank you, Link. Duncan, any follow-ups?
Well, just to say that also, there's kind of like a historic planning versus engineering divide, and that's kind of like where we are right with this. And I'm more concerned about the, kind of the planning and the zoning versus the engineering, the kind of the conflict. So, yes, they have been amenable, and that's what I want to do, is track all those great things that were, you know, we discussed on the 24th and all the stuff that went in. So where are we? That's all.
And given that they're...
For the town.
Given that they're willing to come back within the month to meet with you, do you need this board to take any action tonight?
So far, no. So this is great.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have an ask, actually. Because one thing that is different that you didn't recognize, Link, is that since those initial discussions, we voted at DCPC for historic district there. I have experienced, I mean, I go back to Matt Amarillo when we were doing the Route 28. I do recognize that they like copious amounts of thank yous to be able to achieve some of the things we want to do. But they, in the past, have been somewhat amenable to doing some things at Harwich. I was hoping, because I'm, Stephen and I were doing that, and now he's not here, but I was hoping that you guys would be all right if I went to that meeting along with them just to reiterate how important this is culturally to us and historically, not just road-wise.
Board have a problem with that?
No.
Larry?
No.
Nor do I.
Okay, thank you.
And then Duncan, if you need a further action, we are meeting weekly again, so by next week, as long as you get it in on time, I don't, I'll put it on.
Thank you all so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to comment, Michael.
Larry, go ahead, sorry.
Only that, make me think to your comment on design exceptions, but I think my frustration is, is that they seem to vary year by year. You know, we had the 124 that we got the big house, about two sidewalks, among other things. And now we have, you know, going to, on 122 Bank Street, or not the Bank Street, but the Sakutaka Harbor, where they're going to let us go by with one sidewalk, and now they seem to be going back again. So I would hope that we continue to press that point, because it does, it doesn't seem to be as firm as maybe they say it is, these designs, or their ability to give us some design exceptions.
Through you, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
That Sakutaka sidewalk project has taken eight years so far to materialize. I have never seen, once we finally got traction, and that was, I won't name her by name, but that was a woman that had participated down here with previous TIP projects, a senior planner, and, you know, it was, it was really her that sold that to their project review committee, because I have never seen Mass DOT approve a sidewalk on one side of the road. Their directives are five-foot shoulders, they call them bike lanes, and five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the road. So you add it all up, and the, you know, granite curbing, and you're at like a 43-foot build?
I guess my point was just that, it's a long shot, but I wouldn't want, I would not want to give up yet.
Thank you.
You know, the sidewalk project shocked me, we actually got traction on that through the same program.
Thank you, Larry. Julie, did I miss you?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you, Duncan.
Duncan absolutely gets my vote for the best dressed person in the meeting.
And while we have Link, does any board member have a question on the contract so that he can go home? Any questions for Link on the contract?
I don't.
Okay, Link, all set.
All set. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And if it's okay with the board, since we have our planner in and he's sat here patiently for the last two hours and ten minutes, can we take up Old Business A ahead of reading all the licenses?
Do you want me to read this?
Nope, just Old Business A, which was discussion with Director of Planning and Community Development on potential zoning amendments. That will do, that's another one.
Oh, this is a different one. Oh, sorry.
Come on. I'm hearing no board member object, just Julie trying to get ahead of me.
Who attacked you?
Was Duncan that tough on you then?
Oh, no, what happened?
He just had some foot surgery a few weeks ago.
An angry, an angry applicant.
So as mentioned, discussion with Director of Planning and Community Development on potential zoning amendment articles for 2023 Annual Town Meeting. Welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you.
We, we had some feedback at Planning Board meeting a couple of weeks ago on the draft accessory apartment bylaw amendment. So I, I had a follow-up conversation with Selectman Kavanaugh to just kind of clarify what she was asking me to do. I did revise the bylaw amendment, and I sent the board a cover memo which highlighted the changes that I made, and one of the changes that I, I am hesitating on because it's going to trigger some additional action required. So I was here tonight to see if there was any feedback on the revised draft article. As you know, we do have a Planning Board public hearing scheduled for tomorrow night, and I understand your board, some of you members will be attending that, and so I'm looking forward to getting some feedback from you and the public. But before I did that, I wanted to circle back to the board of selectmen to see if you had any reaction to the revised draft.
Thank you, Paul. Julie, I'll start with you.
Well, can you start with someone else, because I'm having trouble with my thing closed down and I want to pull up.
No, we'll wait for you.
Okay.
Larry, you have anything?
I'm going to wait for Julie.
Me too.
Oh, thank you. Well, no, I haven't.
Sorry, I tried. That was a lifeline.
Mr. Chair, if I could, assuming that we're talking about the February thirteenth memo?
Yes. Yes. All right, then. February twenty-third.
Say again?
No, this isn't.
No, we have thirteenth.
This isn't that one, it's.
We have the thirteenth in the packet as well.
Okay. If you don't have it in front of you, I can kind of read through it if you'd like.
Yeah, will you? Because this, oh, she's got it too. Thank you. I, I think I need a new computer.
Can you hold that up for the public to see?
So following up our discussion at the February fourteenth Planning Board meeting about the bylaw amendments, we, we had three bylaw amendments that the selectmen and the Planning Board asked me to draft for the annual town meeting. Really did not get much discussion at all on the proposed amendments to the floodplain regulations or the additional solar regulations that would cover two different tiers of situations for residential and for commercial properties. Right now, the town has solar regulations that regulate large solar farms that will sell energy back to the grid, but there was a gap between the other types of solar installations that both businesses and property, residential property owners may want to have. So the, so far, no comments on that, but what we did get some feedback on was the draft accessory apartment bylaw amendment. So what I did in, in the revised draft version, I removed the minimum lot size requirements that are currently in that section of the bylaw, and we also included new requirements for property owners to connect the principal dwelling and an accessory apartment. If the sewer is in front of their property, we would require that they would connect both the principal dwelling and the accessory apartment so that we can try to minimize any adverse impacts to groundwater caused by additional flows from accessory apartments. The bylaw, I made other revisions that made the bylaw less restrictive, but I did reinforce one of the existing requirements, and that's a requirement that leases be no shorter than a six-month time period. And I understand the reason why that was in there, because we really wanted to try to create some, some more housing stock for year-round residents and not just for folks that may be looking to generate some revenue from renting part of their property out during the summer months. So what I did was I included a requirement that the owner signed an affidavit at the time of applying for an accessory apartment with the building commissioner stating that they will in fact just rent it for six months or longer. This was actually one of the recommendations that the board, the selectmen and the planning Board both received from former planner John Ideman. I also did some other revisions to the last section of the bylaw that describes what happens if someone is out of compliance, if they have a zoning compliance issue, and focused again back on reinforcing the fact that we really don't want to have any leases for less than a six-month term. Where, there were additional comments that the boards, the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen had received from resident, resident John Ideman, and I did include some of his other recommendations. I did not include all of them, but, but I, for the most part, I found his recommendations to be on target. And so those that I could incorporate, I did. Where I did run into a problem was when there were recommendations to change other sections of the bylaw, and these are sections that were not included in the public hearing notice. This will sound very strange, but given the timeframe to complete this assignment, I wrote the public hearing notices before I started writing the amendments, because there was that month out that I had to schedule that hearing. So I looked at the sections of the bylaw where I was asked to focus on, and in the public hearing notice, I said we're going to change that section. But what I ran into from Mr. Ideman was some recommendations to change other sections of the bylaw that, that are connected in some way. And if I were to incorporate those changes, it would trigger the need to do another public hearing notice and hold a second public hearing that, that mentions those particular sections of the bylaw. A similar situation happened with the recommendation or the request to change the minimum lot size area requirement in the Six Ponds zoning district. As most of you know, that district has a large lot size, minimum lot size of sixty thousand square feet for pre-existing lots and a hundred thousand square feet for newly created lots. And that is big lot zoning. It's unusual for, for Massachusetts to have such large lot sizes, but I understand the intent of the DCPC and the Six Ponds District to try to preserve that area of town, to try to keep it as rural as possible, to keep the density down, and to provide environmental benefits associated with that area to protect the ponds. That section of the bylaw on the Six Ponds District wasn't included in my original public hearing notice. And so to do this the right way, I would need to go back, re-advertise, and then open up that section of the bylaw and, and remove those minimum lot sizes if it were to be consistent with the way we handled the rest of the town by just eliminating all the minimum lot sizes at all. So that was part of, that was the quandary that I'm left with. It, it is possible for me to write another hearing notice and schedule a hearing. It would be on March twenty-eighth, a regular scheduled Planning Board meeting on March twenty-eighth, have another hearing, and, and see where that leads. I had asked to find out what my deadline was. When does it want to close? When does that door slam? And I can make no further revisions. And I did not get a clear answer. I was told it's going to be in the beginning of April. But with me looking at deadlines and wanting to know when I have to get certain things done procedurally, it would be helpful for me to, to know when that hard deadline was. So that's pretty much where we are. I did, I, I really did remove a lot of the restrictions. I maintained some of the, the restrictions that I thought were important. The one last point I wanted to make is that I did meet with the chairman of the Board of Appeals last week, Brian Sullivan, and, and he gave me some background on what the Board of Appeals has been experiencing with these types of cases. And he indicated that there's a lot of pre-existing non-conforming properties in town. These are, these were homes that were developed years ago before zoning was enacted, and as you know, as time goes on, zoning changes, and when zoning changes, it can create nonconformities for properties that existed prior to the enactment of those regulations. He said that with all of those non-conforming properties, the majority of the applications that the Board of Appeals gets is with a garage that doesn't meet the side or the rear setback. And if somebody can't meet that setback requirement, they can't get their special permit, they really need like a variance. And that's a, a more difficult burden for homeowners to, to meet the three requirements for a variance. And so he urged me to take a look at the bylaw to see if we can add some flexibility in to cover non-conforming lot situations, whether the, the principal structure itself, the house, has some kind of nonconformity related to the, the lot line, rear side setback, or whether it's an outbuilding, a garage, or another structure that, that doesn't meet those setbacks. So I, I've started to think about that. I, I told Brian that I would work with him on drafting some language, run it by him after I have a draft, and I'm, I'm in the process of that, and I'm, I'm just trying in my head to work through just what we can do to, to make a difference between a variance requirement and, and make that more flexible for the, the Board of Appeals to get a special permit. So having said all that, I am now willing, ready to listen to, get some feedback on what we've got with the revised draft.
Well, thank you very much. I first recognized that we gave you very little time to accomplish this, and you told us in the beginning you thought it was close to impossible. So you have a pass, and you've done a lot more than I thought you'd be able to accomplish. Julie?
Yeah, thank you, Paul, for, I know it's been a lot of work in a short period of time, and I appreciate you trying to work around it. And I, I know the DCPC was going to be an issue, as we talked about the fact that there's a lot of other zoning issues that have to be addressed. But at least if we could take the general ADU bylaw, change that to start the process moving for others to be able to move, and then we can go through our bylaw changes as we go forward over the course of the year, because it's going to take a lot of time. I think we even have a, a section in there that refers to being able to do it with a special permit, which really isn't accurate, because to your point, there's certain areas that you cannot do it unless you have the square footage. That's why I think eliminating the square footage allows most people to come forward and embark on that journey to see if they can actually meet all the other requirements. And, and then in this scenario, if we do get others from Six Ponds, we can explain. We get it, it's an issue, we're working on it, we're trying to figure out a way that we can also allow this. The only other thing I would say is in terms of the sewer, so the intent of the ADU was to never allow anyone to have an additional bedroom, even connecting to the sewer, and that any ADU being added to a dwelling that has a sewer connection will be mandated anyway. They're mandated to connect within, I think we've got, two years. So the minute they have the sewer, they've got to connect within a certain time period, and they would not be able to add a bedroom anyway. So we wouldn't be looking at increasing any kind of bedroom, you know, abilities or sewer flow. So, but I like what you're saying in the sense of just reinforce, you must connect both the ADU and the dwelling to the sewer. But that would have to happen anyways, once they have the ability to, to connect. And I had one other thing I was just going to mention, yeah, the variance, I, I like that, but I get it, that's going to be probably hard to do, but if, we, we do have a lot of nonconforming properties. And I'm certainly in favor of the six-month requirement for rental. I mean, that's the whole purpose, is we're trying to create housing year-round and/or more permanent housing. So I thank you for putting in all the time on this, and, and even at the Planning Board hearing. I hadn't seen your draft, so I couldn't even comment, but just wanted to get out in front of it, because we have a, a good few scenarios that I think we've all heard, different people's hardships in trying to do this for, for the right reasons, too. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Larry?
No, thank you, Paul. You did a lot of work, and I, and I agree with Julie and your comment, just do what we can. And I'd like to be less restrictive, give people enough chance to go forward, so just move on that, that's good.
Okay, thanks. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Paul, I've got one specific thing, because largely I agree with everything that Julie and Larry said. This has no meaning to you whatsoever, because you don't have the historical context, but through the years on Cape Cod, people would take their house, rent it out in the summertime, and they'd live in Nickerson State Park. I'm concerned that this might have the, the same functional effect, and so the question I have for you is, what would stop me from taking my house and moving into the accessory develop, unit and renting it out, the rest of it as an Airbnb?
That, well, I, I can't speak to the Airbnb part of that question, but in terms of a, a, a single-family homeowner moving into their garage for a couple of months while renting out their main house, that is allowed, and that was allowed by the bylaw. I think there's a provision that says that, that somebody has, that the owner has to live in one or the other. And so that, that is doable now, and, and it would be doable with the passage of this amendment.
That remains a major concern for me, because Julie's heard this up, the MMA, is that we got to come up with a way that we're not facilitating somebody just their fantasy trip where they split it with five people and they just come to the house en masse with four or five cars, and, and I'm kind of an owner-occupied guy, sitting on the side in the small room with a kitchenette or something. My worry is that the objective is get as many people into something that has a roof over their head at a reasonable price as we possibly can, and I don't know what the answer is, I'm just bringing up the question. So you're saying I could actually move into the ADU and, and rent that? That, that's something that we're going to have to work on.
Julie?
So I just recall that when we originally went to the ADU and got on board, when the commission worked with us, not just us, all the towns, on trying to open this up, there were restrictions. It was originally that if you, and, and I think Chatham's has written this way, if you were to create an ADU and decide to live in the ADU and rent your house, it would still be required to be year-round. We're saying six months, right? We can say six months, we can say twelve months, either one. You can live, you must live in one, and, and the other one that's rented is supposed, you're supposed to show a year-round lease to the building commissioner and get a sign off. And to Paul's point in this document is that also the building commissioner has the ability to, to take action if you're violating that. So we may want to do that, I'm not trying to complicate things, but I am saying that originally was the intention.
Don?
Speaking of intentions, my intention wasn't to actually resolve this tonight, it was just to bring up
No, I know, but.
My reading of it, whether this was an opportunity for something unintended.
Right.
And so what you described is, is actually a trend, that, that people my age, after the kids move out and they're, and they're living in their three or four-bedroom home, and they don't need all that space, it's attractive to them to be able to maybe take some other space on their property, renovate it, make it new, move into that, and, and stay on their property and stay in, in the community that they, that they've been living in and they raise their children in. I've got a friend in New Hampshire that's, that's starting a consulting business to try to help people to do this, so they can stay on their property, but then sell or lease out their, their main single-family home with more bedrooms. So it's what people are doing to, to survive in, in the housing crisis that we're all facing now.
Thank you, Paul. I'm all set. Board all set?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience tonight.
We'll see you tomorrow night.
It'll be that way pretty soon.
Mary, are you here for the schedule one, or are you just enjoying the meeting? I want to get you next, schedule. I'm going to skip, get another department head. I'm going to skip yet another department head home. Format and schedule for the March 4th, 2023 joint budget meeting. Joe?
Thank you. So we're now on Old Business C, correct?
That's correct.
So you see the draft calendar in your packet. I would just want to emphasize, again, it's a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. It will be this Saturday, March 4th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. And so what you have there is a draft order for discussion purposes for you all tonight. I do want to tell you that in looking at this again, it may be too much time on sources and uses. However, I wanted to make sure there was ample time for both bodies. You folks have had some chance to digest the sources and uses and where we're drawing on funding. Not sure if the Finance Committee needs more than that. And then regardless, what you see there are the budgets that either have the greatest changes because of enhancement of services, and that would be the case for fire and building. Police Department is the conversation about cruisers, which changes it. And then Conservation Department was the other enhancement of services. Water, wastewater was listed first because the superintendent has indicated that that would be another public body that would join you. So from that timeframe, it would be the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and potentially a quorum of the Board of Water-Wastewater Commissioners. So right now, we can do it from 9:00 to 9:30. If you go that route, which is a change from what you see in your packet, then you can get all of those departments, water, wastewater, fire, building, police, and conservation in by noon time. Then you can do the break from 12:00 to 12:30. Lunch will be provided. And then you have two and a half hours after the break to take anybody else in that you want to hear from or that wants to be heard from. So the question is, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Don?
What Joe just pitched is fine with me.
Second option?
Second option, 9:00, 9:30.
Larry?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, although it might be worthwhile to have, you know, you're starting with a discussion on sources and uses. It may be good to end with that same discussion because we've had, by that time, had updated information, just review where we are. It's short, you know, maybe a little short, maybe another half hour at the end.
Get more revenue in eight hours.
Julie?
I like that idea because I think what happens is we get through everything, but we're all thinking about different things when we leave that, and we don't really kind of go back, and I like that idea.
Good?
Yep.
We all know like I like to jump, bounce around, so whatever you want. So I'll change it if I need to.
I believe I heard Plan B to start.
Plan B and a half.
It would be Plan D by that time.
And then I would be remiss if I didn't just say through you to the community that what I would be really hopeful is if we come out of that day-long discussion where the Finance Committee, because they're meeting their charter obligation by holding at least one public hearing on March 9th, I would love to be able to come out of the Saturday effort knowing what the two boards are leaning towards for our budget. So that allows the Finance Committee to really narrow the purpose of their public hearing to say that we've met and this is where we're at. So that's, you know, a guy can dream, Canty, but that's what I'm hoping will come out of it.
All right. Thank you for staying, Anne Marie. Just a quick reminder to the public, if you're talking in the room when we're talking, the microphones pick it up, and I can hear you also. So if you want to have a conversation, please go outside. All right, so. Anne Marie, you're all set? All right, thank you.
New Business G?
Do you want to go? Yeah, New Business G.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion, but I also want to recognize this is Scribner's error in this. It is not Goodson's. It is Goodson that was applying. So with that, I move that we approve the 2023 Annual Class II Auto License Renewal for Goodson's Motors Cars at 210 Queen Anne Road, Unit 12.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero?
You want me to take H as, H1, H2, and H3 separately?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. I move that we approve a special permit for the Harwich Chamber of Commerce on 1 Schoolhouse Road for a one-day entertainment license, June 10th, 2023, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. outside of the Community Center, 100 Oak Street.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve a one-day wine and walt license for June 10th, 2023, 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. outside of the Community Center, 100 Oak Street, again for the Chamber of Commerce.
Moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero?
And Mr. Chair, I move that we approve an event permit for the Chamber of Commerce for June 10th, 2023, for the Community Center, 100 Oak Street.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero? Motion on aye?
Before we get too far, the memo that we got, and I'm not going to say from whom, but apparently, and I think it's an obvious typo, apparently we agreed to allow somebody to have an entertainment license from noon until 10:00 a.m. the next morning because I'm going to wind up rolling by at about 4:00 to see if, how they're doing. I'm pretty sure that we played fast and loose with the AM and PM part of this.
Fair assumption, and we would just, before we read the motion now, let's just point out the requested changes to last year's license, and they are only inside entertainment until 1:00 a.m. because they're adding jukebox, radio, television, dancing by live performers, patrons and live performers, and then Sunday, same thing. Those are the two requested changes, and both are related to inside, and we've got a great history with this restaurant, not getting noisy.
And if I might, I would also add, just as a reminder, and this is own, because we've been talking about the difference of where things are located, where this request is being made is not densely packed residences all around it.
Correct. Thank you.
With that, I move that we approve the following 2023 license renewals for BLM Restaurant Group Doing Business as a Lanyard Bar and Grill at 429 Route 28. I'm going to do them one at a time. First, the Common Vittler's license.
You can do all three if you want.
Okay.
Unless you want to do them separate.
It's up to the Board.
Go ahead and do it.
Okay. Second, weekday entertainment license, broken down as follows. 1:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. inside, and 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside. Jukebox, radio, television, dancing by patrons and live performers. I was going to kick out of hearing that. Live recorded music and amplification.
Okay. Three?
In three, Sunday entertainment, 1:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. inside, 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside, jukebox, radio, television, dancing by patrons and live performers, live recorded music and amplification. It keeps sounding like Radio City Music Hall to me when we're doing that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero? Going to Old Business B. I believe that's what we're on, yes. Discussion on creating a human resources position. You all talked about this last week. Megan took the liberty of creating a template for a job description, or at least a discussion point. And I'll open this up to Don.
I was wondering if we could wait until Mary's here. The vote that we took was four to oh to have a human resources director that would be a direct report to the Board of Selectmen. That's not the job description we got, and we only got that one this morning. So all of this put together, if it's, the Boards.
You'd like to bring this back next week?
I would. I think it'd be.
We'll bring this back next week. Larry, you okay with that?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Vote to approve the projects for Cape Cod Water Resources Restoration Project, CCWRRP. Julie, you were answering, you read this earlier?
Yeah, ready?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I move to authorize the Chair to execute a grant agreement with the Natural Resources Conservation Service and/or the Cape Cod Conservation District in order to receive technical assistance funds under the Cape Cod Water Resources Restoration Project. These funds would be used for the design of two local projects, the Route 124 Bike Path Fish Passage Project and the Upper Cold Brook Fish Passage Project. It is understood that these two projects were the subject of discussions at the February 21st, 2023 meeting of the Harwich Board of Selectmen and do not require local matching funds.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion?
Great-looking project.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero? Contracts, one motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve a contract amendment with, God, I love it. No wonder we call it VHP. Vanas, Hangan, Bruslin Incorporated, also known as VHP, but we have to gender it with their real name, in the amount of $278,500 for design work for the Sacquetucket Harbor Route 28 Sidewalk Project.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero? And we will go on to, there's a second contract, Joe, in the packet. There's no topic for it, so we'll bring that back next week, but something for you to look at.
Or sleepover.
Julie already signed it, but she didn't say that out loud. Town Administrator's report.
Thank you. Speaking of contracts, there are two that I am pleased to announce. The first one is a contract with Web Services of America, and this is related to the software and mapping project that's been ongoing for several years through the Cemetery Department. This one specifically covers Evergreen Cemetery, excuse me, this one would cover Island, Evergreen Cemetery, similar to work that they had done in Island Pond Cemetery. This was for $32,000. It goes back to town meeting vote, I think, from two years ago. And the, again, the winning bidder on that was Web Services of America. And then the other contract is related to Cavosa Disposal. I do want to emphasize that this is not the town-wide one. Rather, there are several departments, Library, Harbor, Town Hall, Community Center, and Water that have their trash service done through Cavosa. It's a standalone contract. And so we sought an additional 12-month contract for them, and the total contract for that is $13,560.77. Other than that, that concludes my report.
All right. Selectmen's report. Julie?
I don't have any.
Drink, quit. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to remind everybody that there is a public hearing tomorrow night, on Tuesday, for the Planning Board, which will be discussing various zoning amendments. It's very important that people show up to these hearings so they have a fuller understanding, and this is the time, if you have anything that you want to do, say what it might be. But tomorrow at 6:30, Planning Board, Griffin Room.
I'm okay, Michael. Thank you.
Larry, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Moved in seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero?